All right. Good evening and welcome to the April tenth meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. Pursuing to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Remote participation by the public for the public comment agenda item, the public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raise hand feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or video to make a comment or ask a question. In all cases, whether in person or remote, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Every vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Community Television Government Channel. And I'll begin this meeting with a roll call of those here, Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hassenger.
I'm here.
Ms. Hassenger is still underway. Mr. Venkataraman.
Here.
And of course, I am here, our associate member Moore McCormack.
Present.
And staff in the room is Fiona Coughlin.
Here.
And we'll bring our other people in as we need them. All right. So our first agenda item, as always, is public input. If anyone has anything to bring to the board's attention that's not otherwise on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. And I'm seeing none. All right. That brings us to our first agenda item, acceptance of the Tier Two Complete Streets Prioritization Plan.
Ian, would you prefer me to share my screen or would you like to?
If you have, if you have the plan already up on your screen, you can go ahead and share. If not, I can pull it up.
Sure.
So I don't really have a presentation today so much as just the plan itself. Um, is there anything you wanted to say before I start?
Nope. Let me just make sure it kicked me off. Just give me one sec. Okay, there we go. All right. Is that visible?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Ian, yeah, just direct to me whenever you want me to change the tabs.
Okay, yeah. So there is really only one tab that we need to look at for today, and it's the second tab, the Prioritization Plan. So this is sort, this is the, um, the Tier Two Prioritization Plan for the Complete Street, for Grafton's Complete Streets Program. Um, as you can see, it is just really a spreadsheet that lists out the projects, um, some of the, and list, and that sort of describes what the project type is. And then if you scroll over, it gives sort of a preliminary budget that I used, um, updated Mast Dot numbers uh, to, from our Transportation Department for the funding request from Mast Dot. You know, um, as I, as I said, it's all preliminary, all sort of draft budget. Um, the exact budget of any of these projects would be determined during the design phase. Um, should you want to pursue one of the projects? And then listing them out in term, in order, uh, I, you sort of stuck to how I presented them at the previous meeting that I was at where I just looked at, I just sort of broke the town down into regions and just sort of looked at the projects within one region that went to the other. So there really is no specific, um, priority for what project I recommend pursuing first. Uh, or second, it really all comes down to a discussion between the planning board, between the, um, Public Works Department with this select board to see sort of what areas make the most sense to start uh, pursuing a project and some improvements for, um, could these, for the Complete Streets. A lot of the projects are sidewalk focused. I sort of given the feedback that I've heard from folks in town and from you, from the board here at the previous meeting where there was always sort of a need in town or people always would like to, you know, see, see more sidewalks or see more up-to-date sidewalks in town. So that's why the, the big lion's share of, of the plan is looking at sidewalk improvements, but there's always opportunities for um, bike paths on, for you to strip bike path, those are, those can be done fairly inexpensively through, just through some road paint. Um, to connect sort of the, the different nodes in town and the major, um, spots in town. And then, as I mentioned before, the, anything that is state-owned, I did not really include in the, in the plan, only because those are currently ineligible for Complete Streets funding. But, uh, there could be a change in the future for Mast Dot guidance on Complete Streets where state-owned roads can be considered for funding, assuming sort of a sign-off from the Mast Dot District. But, uh, here, you know, we, total of thirty-one projects that were, um, from, you know, from all over town that have been proposed. And in order to really provide residents with better safety and connectivity so they can reach different parts of their neighborhoods and their communities without necessarily needing to drive anywhere. Um, or they, or as long as it's, you know, within easy walking distance. And, you know, one thing that I note, noted is that a lot of these projects are also considered, um, within a mile of a school. Uh, which I think is really good and, uh, really mostly because of just the great layout of distribution of schools in the town. So there could also be access to safe routes to school funding, should you want to pursue that program in the future. It's a, it's a pretty comparable or comparable partner, partner program to Complete Streets, and we are always happy to um, get you more information on that and set you up with the State Route to School Committee or program, should, should that be something that you want to consider? Or unless, unless you're already, uh, pursuing it, but, uh, so this is the plan and sort of the next steps would be for you to, you know, make any comments. If there's any changes you want me to make to the plan, I can make them and you, um, now and present them to the next meeting, or you can vote to accept this. And in that case, I will send a quick template, um, acceptance letter that I, I don't know if I sent that to you already Fiona, if not, um, or Natalia, if not, I can send that to you tomorrow, just a quick letter saying that the board approved the letter or approved the plan, so we can attach it to the submitting, the submission to Mast Dot. And get the plan reviewed by them and approved for, um, for their side. So again, uh, so at this point, I'll open it up to any sort of comments or questions from the board. Thank you Chair. Thank you, uh, Planning Board for this opportunity, and I will, I'll take any questions or comments at this time.
Just, just so I'm clear on this, although this is called a prioritization plan, I, I, I think I understood you to say that the, the projects here are not listed in any particular priority order. That this is, these are a list of sort of a, out of all the possible projects, these are the projects that were chosen to be included in this list, but within this list, um, it remains that the, you know, the prioritization of the items on this list relative to one another remains to be done. And which partly depended upon other factors. Yeah, yeah, probably other reasons for us to choose which ones to pursue when.
That, that is correct. So really, you're, you're not bound to pursue, um, you know, going in order of the projects. It, it, it really remains to be seen, um, with a discussion with your public works to see what street improvement projects they have prioritized or they're planning for this year and next year and so on, so that you can more align. Um, so you can then decide to, uh, pursue projects, you know, say, project fourteen, if that, if that's fitting in with what the town is looking to, um, improve roads in the different regions, and this just provides an additional funding source that the town can pursue, um, to enable to implement these safe measures. So you're not, you're not bound to one and, one after the other.
Essentially, having a project on this list, once that we've, you know, we've all approved the list and everybody's signed off on it, having the project on this list basically makes it eligible for Complete Streets funding.
Correct.
All right. Any further comments, questions, or even emotion?
I'd be happy to move that the board, what's their terminology, accept or approve this?
Either, either one.
Yeah.
Have the board approve the Complete Streets Tier Two Prioritization Plan as presented.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I'm hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, because it was carried by four with one absent. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next on our agenda, just found the right window. There you go. So we have a draft decision for modification of definitive plan twenty sixteen dash zero one dot five for Village at Institute Road, one hundred West Borough and Institute Road, Polty Homes.
Is the hearing open?
This one, no.
Yeah, right. We, we close this. Just pending a decision being drafted.
Correct.
All right. I mean, I read through the decision and it appears to accurately reflect what we ended up agreeing to, discussing at the last meeting.
And will we approve the decision as drafted?
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And a second. Any discussion on the motion? This all looked good to me. All right. Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried, four in favor, one absent. That brings us to the next one for modification special permit, SP twenty twenty dash zero two dot two for site plan approval with Afonso Village, one hundred West Borough Road. And there was some proposed edits from Essex Petrie.
Yes, Essex is here. I can also speak to the edits as you want, Essex.
Good evening. Good evening.
Um, yeah, the only edits, um, thank you again, Essex Petrie with Polty Homes. Um, the only edits that, that, uh, I sent over to Fiona were fairly minor, um, and somewhat editorial, but um, felt important for documentation purposes for, you know, down the road, if someone looking back on it, that it was worthy of, um, commenting on. One was just, uh, referencing a sewer manhole, it's actually a drain manhole, and then, then the order of the buildings as far as, but that one actually is pretty important because um, it was referencing the fire department's, um, uh, request for when the emergency roadway is paved, and so it was just swapped in the decision, so just fixing.
Yeah, I looked, I looked that over and yes, just some term, terminology changes and identification of the buildings. Not as mixed-use buildings, because that's not what they are.
That too, yes, yeah.
And I think the one question I had was in, not the one you have on the screen Fiona, but, uh, Mr. Petrie's edits.
Sure, further down.
Uh, I had a question about F six.
Yes. So this is changing.
Yeah, so the first building to be constructed is, was building one and not two?
No.
Or is it actually building two?
It's, yeah, it is. I, and I, I wasn't in charge of the, how we numbered that, because it is confusing and it.
But yeah, the numbers are irrelevant. The sequencing is what's important.
Correct.
So if building two is the first one, then the last sentence.
Right.
Should we refer to building two and then building one?
Correct, and that's where it's critical.
In your edits, there was, the numbers were crossed out, but the correct numbers weren't put in.
Ah, okay.
So that was, that was what I wanted to.
Thank you for picking up on that. So yeah, that was the intent of that edit is to swap out the, or just change that order around. Building two is being constructed first and then building one.
Yep. So, so yeah, that's basically just, yeah, F six.
Yep.
As, as, as in your suggested edits with, with the exception that in the last sentence, the, the correct numbers need to be inserted.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
There is also a comment regarding condition one that was submitted by, um, the project engineer asking um, to modify the language to say, um, the require submission of a hard copy of the approved amended plans for endorsement as the, um, planning board was provided and has reviewed the amended plan set already, so. That's the, was the, the last major, um, well, major change really, not, not that major. And that was condition one, so. This, this.
Those all looked appropriate to me.
So with those, with those points on the edit clarified, then I didn't see anything else that, uh, again, this is pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Uh, in, in terms of the modifications that are being, uh, done here.
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion tonight?
I will move that the, uh, did this, this hearing, we, did we keep this one open?
Believe we.
I believe we did.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would, uh, we would move, I would move to close the hearing and to, uh, approve in all respects the draft decision as modified per the discussion tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I'm hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Clear, unanimous of those present?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So Fiona, I'll just, I'll pay tomorrow, I'll just, the logistics on, signatures, picking stuff up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can call my office.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Isaac.
And then the last draft decision.
Question. Sorry, it just occurred to me. Did we need to include in those motions to authorize a plan or design on behalf of the board?
I presumed that was included. We didn't actually say it though.
Yes, if we, if, if we didn't actually utter those words, I'm assuming in Bob's motion and my motion that those words are, were intended to be included in the record should reflect that.
Yep, okay. Miss Al, where I see your hand?
You don't need to. You already took that vote and we already got it in the registry. So you don't, she is approved to sign decisions in A and Rs.
Yeah, we've covered that. Perfect. Thank you Natalia.
Thank you.
Amazing how quickly, quickly. I forget how we normally do things.
All right. So. And we did close this hearing, so the next agenda item is for one Grafton Common. And, yeah, first SPA twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
Justin, if I may, we did not receive any, we, we did share this with the, the applicant and we didn't receive any feedback from, from them.
Wonderful. My, when I first looked at this, I saw a bracket of vote under findings, and it's not there now, so great. Okay, I'm, I have no problems. Any comments or discussion from the board?
Yes, couple of points.
Sure.
On F nine. F nine. I'm unclear on why it needs to say SUVs.
If I, if I may, that was in the project narrative, but I can happily take that out.
Well, no, if, if that is quoting from the project narrative, it's reasonable to keep it. I just didn't remember where it came from.
Okay.
F twelve. References Mr. Belfior, who was not previously identified in the, uh, in the documentation here anywhere, so it's, I mean, I, I know what it means, but it's, uh, generally speaking, when you name somebody, there should be, you know, some identification of them as a participant somehow. But again, it's, it may have been in the, uh, material submitted by the applicant at some point.
Okay. Well, I will make that adjustment.
And the last question I have is on condition C one. C one specifically authorizes the change to a cafe specifically to be occupied by uncommon cafe, which could be read to say that if they change the name of the business, this no longer applies. Or if a different business owner of the same use comes in, if someone else, a, a different owner operating a cafe in the same space comes in, this would not seem to cover them. So I don't, I don't know that the decision needs to be specific as to either the name or the ownership of the use. You know, it is authorizing a change in use to cafe. As a matter of fact, I didn't even think to look, is, is cafe a defined use in the use table?
Don't think so.
I, I don't remember it being in the use table, but, but.
I think it's like such-and-such serving at such-and-such tables or something like that, but not, not a particular term.
So I just, you know, I just, I, I want us to be clear on what the new use is that we're authorizing and not to be unnecessarily specific.
Okay.
Other than that, I didn't see anything that caught my eye.
I think, good for me, other than what you just brought up. Do I have a motion?
Move that the board. Again, did, we already closed the hearing, isn't this right?
Yes.
All right. Move that the board approve the decision in all respects as modified pursuant to the discussion at this meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried unanimously of those present. And that brings us to a approval not required for twenty twenty-three dash zero seven eleven Willa Road, Two Stillwater Lane and Four Stillwater Lane, Wright Trust Realty and Stanley and Lisa McGriff. I did see a memo from you, Fiona. Do you want to briefly kick us off on your end?
Sure, absolutely. So I did speak to the applicant, um, about whether, um, this application, um, should be an A and R versus a modification of a definitive plan. Um, the applicant did, um, request that it be seen as an A and R and want to give them that opportunity so that with their formal submission, we're adhering to the, the deadlines. Um, however, I do know, um, in the past that this has been done as a modification because the site plans are changing. Um, and also the language that was in the original, um, definitive plan decision does call for that, but I do want to give the applicant the opportunity to speak today in front of the board, um, state their case, and then the board can review as they see fit. Um, there is changing, a reconfiguration of the lot lines for lots one, one A and one B. Um, and I'll give, um, the applicant the opportunity to, to discuss further.
Good evening. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, my name is Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. Uh, want to thank Fiona for, you know, following, uh, my request. Um, I guess I was a little surprised to hear that initially it would be, um, automatically considered a modification. Uh, I've been doing this for a long time and the, uh, the A and R plan that we're proposing to, uh, swap some parcels of land are as a result of, uh, the construction of the foundation here at, uh, lot, I guess lot two, number four, Stillwater Lane. So I know this is a subdivision that's, uh, actively under construction. Uh, but under Mass General Law, uh, we're not proposing any alterations to frontage. We're not creating new lots. Um, again, the result, uh, the reason for the A and R is a result of the construction of the foundation, which did not impose on the setback. What it did is it imposed slightly on the fifty-foot flexible buffer yard. So to address that, what's happening is, is uh, the gentleman who was the original owner of this development parcel, Mr. McGriff, uh, co-signed the application as a, as a joint, as an owner of one of the parcels involved. Uh, he'll be conveying the land, the parcel in green, three hundred and eleven square feet to the applicant, uh, Wright Realty Trust. In return, Wright Realty Trust will convey equal land area back to Mr. McGriff in blue, and the orange parcel is parcel A, uh, also needed for comply with the fifty-foot buffer yard, comes from the applicant's other lot.
I, I would really like us out here to be able to see your, your colors.
So, yeah.
Because.
I was just going to comment to that.
I could not make sense out of the black and white drawing. Um, they're, they're just issues with the way it's written out.
Sure. Parcel A is, so parcel A will uh, be conveyed from lot one R to lot two R. Parcel B will be conveyed from the butter, Mr. McGriff, to lot two R. And parcel C will be conveyed from lot two R back to Mr. McGriff. So that's an equal land area swap. None of these parcel configurations affect frontage. Uh, as you know, the subdivision's under construction. It has been bonded. Uh, there is sufficient bond to complete the construction of the subdivision. Uh, my reading of the subdivision control law certainly, uh, has determined that the court has decided that the planning board should consider, uh, this A and R endorsement, uh, as not, you know, not being a modification. So I just, uh, wanted to present that information and, you know, discuss this with the board.
Yeah, I have to say that my understanding of the subdivision control is consistent with yours, specifically that a lot, the, the, under section eighty-one L, uh, an A and R or a, a lot proposed for an A and R needs to have sufficient frontage. Typically, it's on a, on a public way, but qualifying frontage under eighty-one L includes, and this is item B of A, B, and C, a way shown on a plan approved and endorsed, which is exactly what this is. So my, I, I would, I would argue that this does qualify as an A and R. There have been differences of opinion on this board. Uh, but seems to me that the clear language of eighty-one L qualifies this as an A and R.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, that's my opinion and my reading of the eighty-one L.
Yeah, I, I would agree. There are, there are several criteria that the planning board must consider prior to endorsement of an A and R, but the one that you spoke to is exactly the one that I had highlighted.
Now, as a practical matter, when the board is looking at a situation like this, uh, the board, I think wisely would be reluctant to approve as an A and R. Frontage on a paper, a paper road that may have been approved but is not, is neither under construction nor has any guarantee that ever will be constructed. I think the board would be, would be, uh, correct to refuse to endorse an A and R under those circumstances. In this case, the road is under construction. There is surety to a guarantee that it will be completed, so I think it, there's, there's no doubt in my mind that it qualifies as an A and R.
Yep, and I agree again with that statement.
Mr. Hassenger.
But, but we, we went through this, I think our most recent case, uh, like this may have been Abbey Woods. And, uh, pretty much the same situation.
Yes, and I made the same argument then and you ignored it.
What's that?
I made the same argument then and it was ignored. So I'll speak my case.
Well, I, I, I believe that our council today confirmed that this is a modification of, uh, of a subdivision. And I guess, I'm not sure, I, my sense was, she was saying, you know, we ought to do it as a modification of the subdivision, not as an A and R. Fiona?
If I may speak to that, yes, I, I did check with town council. And their opinion was that it was a modification of the definitive plan.
Hmm, so we can ignore that part of eighty-one L, okay.
Did they say why? Town council?
She, well, she said based on the way the statute is written and the way the, the project is currently, that it would be a modification.
Yeah, I, I guess I would need more. I would love references to statute that town council would, would feel, you know, have that opinion, but we're not going to have that tonight, apparently.
I mean, I can absolutely have her get in contact with your lawyer and team.
But we're going to have to decide something tonight.
Yeah, I, I'll say that my inclination based on, you know, what I looked at as well was kind of in line with Mr. Robbins, you know, but I will say. You know, but I will say if our council is recommending a different approach, then.
All right, let's try it this way.
Yep.
I will move that the board find that approval is not required and, and issue the appropriate paperwork to that effect. And if the board votes against that, so be it.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second if I'm. For calling the vote. All right, any further discussion on the motion?
I need to understand this a little more, Justin.
Sure.
Before I report, so can I hear from both Bob and. Dave. I, I'm not here. I don't have an opinion, I don't have, I don't understand this part, whether an A and R is required or not.
Alright, so.
So he.
Yeah, I.
Okay, clarify, are you looking for a better explanation? You did not, you did not hear the first round of, of discussions, is that, is that what I understand?
I, I would say yes.
I guess he'd like to hear the arguments again.
No. Prebo, did you read Fiona's memo?
I did, but I don't recollect right, right now, I don't remember it on top of my head. What was in Fiona's memo, was that about from the town council?
No, that was before the town council. The, the, the thing is, I don't see why this can't be done as a modification of the. The subdivision plan pretty easily. The.
If I may, but I, I'd like to ask the applicant why you're pursuing it this way versus a modification, just give us some context.
Mostly time, modification is gonna require a button notifications, the opener of a public hearing. A very unnecessary process for something so simple that's delaying the construction of a house that people. Have purchased and are, you know, would like to move into with their family.
Could be a minor modification.
Yeah, we did.
We don't do that.
Right, the, the last one we, we did, that was a very similar circumstance Bob referenced at Abbey Woods. We ended up agreeing to handle that as a minor modification. Through which we avoided the typical, the full, the full process. And, you know, that goes back to section eighty-one W, which deals with modifications. And eighty-one W basically says that. For a, a, a change, a modification of the subdivision, the procedures for the initial subdivision review. Should be, should apply so far as apt, and that so far as apt language means we have the flexibility. So we ended up handling that as a minor modification. Procedurally, it amounted to almost the same thing. It was a simplified review, you know, and, and I think we handled that very easily. So, yeah, we could, we could handle this either way. As an A and R or as a minor modification.
So, yeah, thank you for that clarification, because that, it, it does actually make a difference whether it's a, I know. A modification requiring a public hearing or not. I guess my comment is, if you're gonna require modification. And not notify the public, what's the difference between approving the A and R endorsement and a minor modification?
What you call it.
Right, semantics.
And if, and if the board is more comfortable calling it a minor modification and otherwise people's handling it roughly the same way.
Yeah, there's, the thing is that this is covered in a condition in the approval. Says if there's any change.
Yep, I actually have that condition with me.
Yeah, and that, that was, probably that was in the memo. And so. We. I want, if, if the current motion were withdrawn, maybe we could. Come up with a motion that would cover this right about now, Dave.
Would, would it be acceptable to the board to, on the basis of the plan that was submitted as an A and R plan? Approve the plan as a minor modification? Would that work?
If we do, then we can go home soon.
My, my only question in doing that is. Where it's listed in the agenda as an A and R, does that cause problems on that front? And I.
It's not the, the formal application is not for minor modifications, so we'd have to.
Subject to receipt of the application, I suppose.
In the worst case. File the, file the appropriate paperwork for the minor modification, have that dealt with at the next meeting, two weeks?
Yes, yep.
So the decision of the subdivision states that the planning board may, upon its determination, require a modification if it finds that the proposed changes are substantial in nature. And of public concern and substantially alter the plans and information used in making the original decision. Just because this, the condition was referenced, I wanted to read it into the record. I mean, I, I don't see that this change is substantial in nature, and, and it doesn't sound like you do either, since we're talking about a minor modification.
It's pretty clearly not substantial in nature. It's, the question now before is really a sort of a procedural question. How do we move this forward to completion?
Natalia, can you confirm if the new. The new application is required?
Well, we would need an application, I guess. But previously you did it as a modification and that would require a modification of definitive plan form. If it's a minor, if you're considering as a minor modification as opposed to what you did before, then it could just be. A letter requesting. Determination of minor modification is what it's called.
That's correct. That's my experience Natalia as well, that we, there is no application for a minor modification, it's only an application for. A known modification under eighty-one W.
Correct.
We're dealing with subdivision plans, there is no really formalized procedure or definition of a minor modification.
Correct.
I think the closest we can come is the, the discretion that eighty-one W allows us sort of implicitly.
So I would normally submit a request, the board would make a determination of minor or substantial, substantial would then require a subsequent. Formal, you know.
Right, if the board, right, if the board were to determine that the proposed change is sufficiently substantial, then. We would expect to do the formal, you know, the whole, the whole formal process with public hearings and everything.
That's correct.
I'll just say, I think where we don't have a formal application for minor modification, you know, and I say formal application as a letter, you know, but. We don't have that in front of us yet, technically could have read it right now, but I'm saying it's not on our agenda. I have a little bit of concern with, you know, even though it's very similar in form of proving something that is not on our agenda.
Yep.
You know, that, that, two weeks from now, I lean toward having the board, you know, vote on the A and Rs, Mr. Robbins had, you know, motioned.
Yep.
And if this, you know, because either way, if we have an A and R open and we don't act on it, then it's automatically approved.
Sure.
So I think we should do.
So let's, so let's revise the motion to deny the A and R on the basis that a. I don't even know.
The same thing we had about Abbey, the same way.
Same thing we did for Abbey Woods. And with the understanding that. The appropriate, the appropriate submission for a minor modification of the definitive plan, which. Likely consists of the plan as we're seeing it now in a letter. Whatever, whatever, whatever staff determines to be the most appropriate, then we, we can then. Wrap this up at the very next meeting.
Yep, and I won't, I won't, you know, I don't have a problem with that, I don't have, you know, any argument to make. Very helpful.
Ms. Howard, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to note, I believe that Abbey Woods, you did do it as a modification and not a minor modification determination. So I'm not sure what you're going to use, but just for.
No.
Backup, the reasoning is, is the only thing that Fiona and I would probably wonder.
The language was, the road was not. Not accepted by the planning board. Well, you, you, you have that language there.
Yeah. Thing, the thing is, I, I, I'm not comfortable denying it on the basis of the road. Not having been accepted by the town because the, the roadway itself does qualify as frontage for an A and R.
Correct.
I think it's more like, I, I think we're more looking at, looking at the, the requirement in the decision than the, in the. Definitive plan approval, we're looking at the requirement that says. Any modification must be brought to the board and, and the way of, I'm looking at the language.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's really the basis for, for denying the A and R is that, that it's a, it's a modification. Under the, that particular condition of the definitive plan.
Okay, yeah, again, I won't object if, if we have a, seems like there's an understanding that this would be treated as a, as a minor and substantial modification, so. We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll make that request. You do have an open motion, you probably wanna act on that, but. I'll make that, you know, subsequent to your action, I will make that request in writing.
Thank you. So you formally adjusted your motion.
Yes.
As a seconder, I will accept the adjustment as well as a second to make that formal.
And again, just to be clear, it's. It's. We, we're saying we don't approve the A and R specifically because the. Definitive plan approval has a condition that requires a modification like this to be. Reviewed by the board under the terms of the definitive plan approval. I don't want there to be any confusion that we don't agree with the eighty-one L about this frontage qualifying as A and R in and of itself.
Yeah, understood, perfect.
I move the question.
Any further discussion from the board on the motion to deny the A and R? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hessener.
Hi.
Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, declare it unanimous of those present.
Okay, see you in two weeks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Fiona.
All right.
All right, that brings us to seven.
Seven thirty.
Alright, so that brings us to the special, the. Public hearing on a special permit for site plan approval, eighty-two and twenty-two Donahue, eighteen and twenty-two Donahue Lane.
Oh, didn't you know they've, they've extended Donahue Lane now, so there's a number eighty-two on it? We're way out with that one.
So. Do you wanna kick us off before we have the applicant talk, Fiona?
Sure, absolutely. So the applicant did provide a formal response to Graves' report as well as revised site plans. They did briefly touch on my memo, I was looking for a little bit more information from the applicant, but hopefully they will be able to. Address some outlying concerns today. We are, we did receive some, some updates in the past week. Of this, the status of the site, which prompted a site visit from myself and the building department in regards to the. Special permit that was on the site. However, with that being said, the, that is under investigation currently and is not. You know, it won't hinder this new application that, that is before the board currently. However, it's something, it is something to bear in mind, something that is, will be part of the record. I do want to, to add that we will definitely, we, we did follow up, but we do need some clarification about the. The road and the, the status of that as well, which I'm hoping the applicant can provide. I mean, we did receive a significant number of. Comment from the public about the current operations and all of those are available on the exhibits as well. So I would like the applicant this evening to speak to some of those concerns as well. There's a lot of outlying questions that I think. Should be answered this evening, so with that being said, give them a chance to speak to that.
Thank you, Fiona.
Okay, good evening. Vito Colono of Connorstone Engineering. I can't see the audience, so I'm not sure if Mike McKeer is in the audience today. I don't think he is.
I don't see him today, no.
Okay, I couldn't see the other side of the room, I didn't know if he happened to jump in, he's the applicant. But we're here on behalf of the applicant with the civil engineer for the project. So as, as it was said, we did provide the updated plans addressing the engineering review. And we didn't hear anything back yet from Graves, but they were pretty straightforward. Comments, nothing too substantial, so I'm assuming that those were. Taken care of or satisfactorily addressed. Graves' issues. I know that one of the major things is obviously the road, and it was requested that. Research be provided on ownership of the roadway and the applicant's attorney is working on that. We haven't had any. Clear answers yet, but I know they are working on that, so that's still a remaining outstanding issue that we really don't have any. Good answers for you for tonight. We did provide some other plans in there, I know it was talked about having some cross-sections cut through the. The site to be able to look at view sheds from, say, abutting properties. We did provide those, I can share my screen if you wanna see. Those. Oh, I'm disabled. Unless you have them.
She's, she's adding you that right, right now and then, you know, the planning board also welcome those to be submitted formally through. You know, anything I'm sharing today, just be submitted to the town, we have it on our record, we can look at it again easy. I do see your screen, but you're muted now, just, just to make sure we're on the same page.
For some reason, when it goes to share screen, it mutes my microphone. I'll try it again.
Good old technology.
Yep. Not sure, when I share the screen, it mutes the microphone. Well, I'm gonna share it briefly and then I'll, so I'll tell you what you're gonna see. So we added the, beefed up that landscape berm in the back, added a stockade fence, a privacy fence on the top of it. And then cut three sections through the site, one showing where the building is, the slope, the fence, and then the abutting property line. With those neighbors up off Hollywood.
This is shown on what, I, I have March twen- thirtieth site plan. Is this the March thirtieth site plan?
So this was a separate plan sheet submitted with the last package, it's a one-of-one set. So it is part of the site plan application, or I mean, I said, by the site plan package, it's the separate exhibit plan that we submitted with the last.
When, when was it submitted?
I'll just say, Bob, I do see this on our PDF for the, the March thirtieth, you know, site plan.
Yep.
It is just not in color in our version.
Right, I called it up just for the presentation. But it was submitted with the March thirtieth package. I don't know why it's having that technical problem with the muting, I don't know if there's a way to share, if you had that as a PDF, if you could share that possibly.
Well, we're seeing it on the screen and hearing you.
Right.
Oh, okay, great. Oh, that works perfect then. Okay. So as you can see those, it does show that section through there, just so that the top of that fence. Is basically at the top of the building or even higher. So it does really provide that screening, I think, that they were looking for, just showing that, that section through there.
Which year is this section on?
It should be the last page of the PDF.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it says sheet one of one, but it's the last page of the PDF.
Yep, scroll down to the bottom of the PDF.
This. Have you seen the visuals that have been submitted where people look out there and. I can't tell right offhand anyway from. What we've got here. Where their eye points would be. In or around their homes. I, the, the, the video, the one video I managed to connect with successfully. You can see, you know, you can see trucks moving around down there. I just.
Yeah, right now, because that slopes all the way down towards the site. You should be, from the backyards of the Hollywood properties, you probably could see right down into the site right now. So instead, in the future, there'd be a berm up with a fence on top of it to cut that view off. Uh, so at instead in the future, there'd be a berm up with a fence on top of it to cut that view off.
You know, that's what I'm I'm trying to. Evaluate and I almost need uh, a drawing that goes further. Further to the to the right, that shows that, um, you know, now and and. What we'll end up with because I understand their concern.
Yeah.
And we do, we do have to be satisfied with screening and buffering.
We could continue that section further. We just stopped it at the property line. Uh, we could continue it up through the abutting properties and include, say, the house and the first floor. Uh, I think they're all single floor houses on that street. Um, so there's no two story. Uh, homes up on that on that side anyway, in that stretch. I think they're all ranches. Uh, there's no two story, like Colonials or anything. Um, so we could include that in the sections, so you could see where you'd see from, let's say, the backyard or the first floor kitchen window looking out the back.
Yeah, that would be more, that'd be really good for everybody, I think.
Yeah.
And a and a berm, well, an adequate berm might at least help with sound too.
Yep.
A- as you have no doubt noticed, there are people over there who are not. It's just yes.
And while while we're on the topic of things, I would, the board would like to see from plans, you know, one thing that would benefit me is. A photometric plan with regards to those, you know, the lighting of coming off this building, that's been some, this is something that that. Has been mentioned as a concern by abutters and it would be beneficial that. If you're, i- if the photometric plan does show past the lot line of at least, you know, regarding the lights that are on your property. You know, I'm not gonna ask you to identify lights, you know, outside your property, but at least to see that, you know, how much and. You know, they would penetrate, you know, beyond your property line.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah, the um, sections, as I, I think I was trying to say, be really helpful if we could see. Okay, I saw those trucks moving in the video, so now I wanna go back and look at. The current condition in in your sections. Including where that would have been going on. Okay, better idea, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, okay, good.
If I may, I just had a question for the applicant, Vito, or the representative of the applicant. How are you planning to address noise? It's un- it's it's unclear. I mean, I know additional measures being taken than what's been discussed because it's based on the. Information that we've heard from the public, current operations are quite noisy. I'm going to need to see something there.
Right, so yeah, at the top of the berm, they were including that um, a fence up there, a solid fence along the whole top of it. And along the side property line now. Um, is there any. Specific standard under the site plan about noise, or is there something we should be trying to meet? Um, do you have any specific levels?
I don't think, I don't think we have numbers. We have satisfactory for the board must find that it's satisfactory.
Okay. Um, okay, yeah, so right, so we just added that fencing in there and adding and beefed up the berm a little bit in height. Um, those are really the the main issues. Um, so.
And that will, that will tend to direct the noise or block some of the noise from reaching the neighborhood. How much? I don't know if you can quantify it.
Crafton does not have any specific noise ordinance on file, but that falls back to the, you know, state's X. You know, decibels over ambient at the lot line and, you know, I forget the exact what the X is, but that's the. General rule with the state, but, you know, we still have some discretion on what's appropriate for.
Yeah, noise. Noise tends to be a bit problematic to find an effective way to regulate or even measure it. Noise to one person is not noise to another person, so that's, it's inherently somewhat subjective.
Is there anything else you wanted to talk to on behalf of the applicant tonight?
Um, I don't think that we had any more questions for you. I just, I guess if you had any other concerns. Um, that needed us to address in the meantime, or look, start looking into.
I. I do have, there's one question that kind of pops in my mind is I believe the applicant explicitly said that they do not. And will not be doing crushing on the site in the, you know, with this, but I. I've seen videos and other, you know, comments that suggest that they are. And that's a, you know, that's a concern on two fronts for me is, you know, if that's going to continue to happen, that's a concern and. To me, it's also a concern that if, you know, they said they're not doing crush crushing and they are, then that's basically them. Misrepresenting themselves to the board, and that doesn't sit well with me, but that's just to say it out loud that, you know, something to to recognize.
Okay, uh, I will clearly uh, give, uh, pass that on to them. Um, you know, I know that they have told us also that. Uh, there wouldn't be any crushing in the future, um, but I will definitely pass that on to them to make sure. And hopefully that the next meeting, they'll be there to be able to address that.
I'm pretty sure we were told that at the time of that past. Um. Permit, so. Um, it raises some questions.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think the original permit allowed for it.
Absolutely, um, my recollection is, you know, this was a concern and there wasn't a commitment. And the commitment has not been respected. And I have no idea how uh, we can have any additional confidence. That it'll be uh, respected now. Maybe they can figure that out. You know, maybe, ma- maybe they can give us some version of um, non criminal disposition.
Any further questions or comments from the planning board at this time?
Just just one sort of observation following the immediate train of thought there that. Generally speaking, we like to think that all the conditions that we put into a decision will be honored. And it's largely up to the applicant to do so. Uh, enforcement is generally somewhat problematic. Cause we don't have the resources to have inspectors out there all the time, you know, monitoring every permit for. Compliance a hundred percent of the time, so.
Yeah.
The the question comes up if we do impose, if we do approve something with conditions. We would like to think that the conditions are likely to be honored.
Agreed.
They know more.
Well, I want more than that.
Well, what, I mean, you you can follow that thought up with with what gives us reason to think that the conditions are likely to be honored or not.
Well, I I guess there's a question of whether a complaint relative to the condition was ever um. Filed with the zoning officer.
Yeah, as as a practical matter, largely enforcement of conditions is gonna be driven by complaints.
Right, and was there one?
My my understanding right now is that, you know, the situation with regards to the current. Um, approval we gave as well as its current, you know, operations is something that is being reviewed by staff at this time.
Yes. It's under investigation.
Yeah, but that's not exactly my question, my question was specifically, was there or wasn't there a complaint of any sort?
Prior, prior to just. Sometimes complaints unfortunately fall in deaf ears, but. Again, it's a question of, it's a question partly of resources available to the town.
Right. And, yeah, I would wish that they would never fall into fears, but that's just me, anyway. Seeing there's no further questions or comments from the board at this time, I'll open up to the public. I will. Preface this with everything that's been said at the last meeting. We're fully aware of everything that's in our gen-, you know, in our record, we're fully aware of. So there should not really be a need to repeat, you know, what was already said, but other than that. Anyone that like to speak or make a comment or anything, we can certainly, if I do so. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Catherine Renzoni, seven Jordan Terrace.
Thank you.
So we've talked about the trucks that are on the site and we've all seen the videos that are on the site, so we know that there are clear and open violations, whether there's a two thousand fifteen. Permit or not. Will the board move forward with an action, knowing that there are violations on the site that this applicant has blatantly done?
Uh, moving forward and any sort of actions regards to the previous, you know, thing and any violations to that, something that, you know.
This special permit.
Yeah, especially for this special permit, that's something the board will have to decide and see what we can do in conditions and, you know, work it out with. With our decision process, so I I can't say that we will or will not do any, you know, approve or or that or deny this app, this special permit. The previous one, anything that goes toward that would be through our zoning enforcement officer and that's something that, you know, we can only kind of pass that along.
So reliability of the applicant is not taken into consideration when considering another permit. It they're given a clean slate and any violations previous to this are not considered.
We have to create a consider, you know, reliability and the, our ability to expect that things will be followed and how, you know, we proceed with that as well. So, you know, that is something that we take into consideration, how we and how we decide and, you know, within the letter of the law as well in that regard.
Right, it's the the issue is that, yes, there's outstanding outstanding issues with the prior special permit. However, this is a new special permit application and as part of the analysis and the review, we take into consideration all the factors. Ultimately, you know, the board will make a decision based on all of the evidence. You know, however they can, and they are allowed to proceed with this current special permit application through the channels currently, but we are built, you know, again. Building an investigation and currently working with a zoning enforcement officer about follow up regarding the prior special permit.
And will those violations be investigated before any action is taken on this permit?
Yeah, the and the investigation is currently underway, so yes, that's.
It will be completed before any decisions are made on this permit.
Yes.
Um, I'd suggest that we're going, i- i- if there is an issue that arises out of that. That we wanna touch base with counsel about. How how much and how we can incorporate any of that into this case. I I I've read some stuff that means I wanna ask that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Steve Ari. I live at thirteen Hollywood Drive.
Thank you.
Um, just wanna review kind of what was going, what we spoke about tonight. Um, it was unfortunate that we didn't see Mr. McCora attending tonight, um, cause we have a lot of concerns as as abutting neighbors. Um, there were a lot of concerns that were just not reviewed um, by Cornerstone Engineering, um, that I'm hoping can be reviewed before a decision is made. Um, including the site visit um, and updates from that. Um, in terms of the berm, um, I don't know if anybody, I don't know if everybody saw the video that was coming from my house. Just the the crushing and the the very loud noises. I hope people are able to see that with volume on because it's very distracting. Um, and that is current operations that. In twenty fifteen.
There we go.
So I'm just concerned there's many things happening right now on the site that are daily, even today, just impacting quality of life. Um, and so, like the former speaker just said, just I'm hoping those are taken into concern um, into account. Um, in terms of a fence being put in, I could still easily see um, the site. Um, there are some two story homes um, abutting that um, with the downslope of our yards. Um, so easily we'd be able to see over that fence. Also, I think lighting would penetrate right into our homes still, um, and. The noise is a very, very big concern. I'm hopeful, like I said, that everybody's able to see that video. Um, kind of unfortunate that there weren't any other updates from McCora or um, the representatives there. And once again, unfortunate, he wasn't able to attend this, cause we, it's a, it's a very stressful thing for us in the neighborhood and. It seems like we're just playing this along for a while and we wanna have a resolution. Um, so ultimately, my bullet points before I even came tonight. The activity on site has already impacted my family and my young child. Um, I have a one year old at home. It's a scary situation, given the site has been misbe- misused already. Um, in the zoning bylaws, a contractor's yard is for the storage of equipment, supplies and materials. And has been digging, crushing and screening happening. I'm hoping the town will do right and reference the zoning bylaw one point five five. Where it states that grant, a granting authority shall deny an application for a special permit. When it determines that a nuisance will be created or for any other reason, there'll be substantial harm to the neighborhood. Um, so that's all I wanted to share tonight. Thank you.
Just to say out loud for, you don't need to stay up for this, but just to say out loud for, you know, anyone that may not know. When I asked for the photos, photometric simulation, that is explicitly trying to show at various points along the plan, basically. Entire, you know, view of it, what the light levels will be at that with their, you know, new design, so that would show, you know, with. Um, you know, that would be peer reviewed as well, that would be, that would show, you know, what the light level will be like at the lot line and. I asked for explicitly, you know, beyond the lot line as well, so that would, you know, kind of help show the difference that this would cause.
Good evening, John Renzoni, seven Jordan Terrace. Uh, got a few questions that hopefully Cornerstone can answer for me tonight, since Mr. McCurey is not here. Uh, Mr. McCurey indicated on the twenty seventh that the building height was going to be twenty four feet above. The slab elevation. Uh. My question is, are there any mechanical systems that are gonna be on the roof of that building? We have not seen any plans for this building yet. The only thing that I have seen is the light latest set of plans now show four overhead doors facing. George Hollywood Drive as opposed to three that were proposed at the last meeting. Uh, so I'm, my question is, are there any. Mechanicals for this building, heating, air conditioning, that are going to be. On top of the building, outside of the building or inside of the building? And why haven't we seen a set of plans yet for the building? I I. I'm a little concerned that the planning board would okay a building without knowing what it was actually going to be and look like.
Right, yeah. I will say the applicant is, you know, I know last time, you your questions were very on on the nose for me, but and they answered them, but. Generally, your questions come through the chair and then they have the option of answering them essentially and, you know, we can ask for it as well, but. You know, option and I, I will say at least for that question, you know, I would like to know the answer, but I don't know that they have it and as far as actual. Like, how the structure is designed is generally something that is up to building code and not so much, you know, the plan we just, you know, we just decide. What is.
Well, yes, I assume it's gonna be the code, but my question is, they're telling us the building's twenty four feet. But s- as an example, similar to the buildings they put up uh, behind our braddishes.
Yeah.
You know, those buildings were looking pretty good up until the point they put all the condensing units on top of the building, which added more height.
No, I.
So that's my question is, you know, I'd like to see a set of plans for the building. That's gonna show if there's mechanicals outside the building, inside the building or on top of the building. Cause that's gonna obviously change the height of the building if we put anything on top of it. Well, that's, that's one of my questions. Uh, actually, this is one that Mr. Colonna can answer for me. Uh, he did state tonight that the berm, they have raised the height of the berm that's gonna abut Hollywood Drive. Uh, could you tell me what that elevation is now, Mr. Colonna? That was the the berm height now, the the new berm height.
Yep, just one second, I'll pull that up for and I'll get you the exact elevation. One second. Sorry, for that, uh, elevation three ninety eight in one end and. It goes down to three ninety six down at the opposite end. And then tapering off right at the very end of it. And then there would be a fence on top of that.
Right, I see the six foot fence, yep.
And then um, through the chair, just the the building mechanicals right now. I didn't think there was any anticipation of the mechanicals being on top of the building itself. Uh, they will, they can get more refined uh, building drawings for you just to confirm. Um, but the ones I've seen have not had mechanicals on the roof um, so far.
Okay, circling back to the elevation of the berm, what was the height of the berm? Okay, circling back to the elevation of the berm, what was the height of the berm before on the previous set of plans?
Um, I think it was, I don't actually have the old plans in front of me. Um, I think we raised it by a couple of feet.
I can tell you exactly what the elevation was on the old plans. It was three ninety-eight. So the elevation has not changed, so.
Sorry about that.
You're putting forward that you've raised the elevation of the berm when you have not. The, the elevation is still the same as it was before. And that is also on paperwork that you have submitted to the town.
Ready to, can I reply? So it, that would be up in the far end. Yes, it's still at three ninety-eight. Uh, it's the lower end that got raised up now that I'm looking at it. So it's half the berm got raised up.
Closest to the berm did not receive any increased elevation.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
A butt closest to the property line did not. In, in section two on the, the plan that by section two and section three possibly, those did not.
Right, that's where it got increased was down at that end. Uh, that berm got pulled down further.
Further up Hollywood Drive, the elevation still remained the same.
Yeah, up in the top, very far end, uh, yep. Closest, yes, that got increased.
The ones closest to the building. Okay, so that, that berm height has not changed over there. And if anything, we possibly lost some, some cover with only a six-foot fence now as opposed to the, the initially proposed. Six to eight-foot shrubs earlier. But I mean, that's really not, not that big of a deal. But I just. The berm height was indicated to have been raised and it has not. And, uh, to follow up on Mr. Hassenger's, uh, question about the cross-sections. Uh, he did have a good point that those properties do continue to go up. And the backs of those houses are two stories overlooking. So there's quite an elevation change. Uh, they're going to be able to see over that six-foot fence, no problem. I think the lighting has already been. Addressed. Uh, another question that obviously is probably going to have to go to Mr. Macura is, uh. Any diesel fuel hazardous chemicals, liquid storage on the site, do we know? Whether inside or outside the building?
I have not seen a response to that yet.
So that has been submitted to him?
That's been submitted to our record. I don't know that we've sent any direct questions to him about that, but either way, it's something I'm, I will be looking for.
There was an inquiry in my memo. Before.
Remember for sure.
All right, uh, on the project narrative, you know, in the special permit application. Uh, the applicant indicated that there were going to be a maximum of twenty employees there on the larger shift. Uh, now at the last meeting, the March twenty-seventh meeting, you know, he said currently there's only three employees there. And he didn't foresee anything in the near future changing. But looking over the plans, I see the septic has been designed for a twenty employee capacity. And again, all the paperwork is showing, uh, a twenty person, uh, twenty personnel being on the site. It, it appears on a daily basis. Uh, so that again brings up the whole issue with increased traffic. And again, requesting a traffic study if this is going to be the case. Because he, it keeps showing twenty employees on all of his applications, all the paperwork. I think there was something in Graves Engineering paperwork mentioned twenty employees also. So that would be something that, again, I know the board has looked at this doing a traffic study. I would again request that that be done if this is, if twenty employees are going to be there and this does get approved. Or we move towards it being approved. I've also seen nothing yet on the parking area that's going to be over the top of the leaching field. I haven't seen anything changed on the plans yet there for the pavement that's going to be over the leaching field for the septic system. Uh, I would assume that's going to be Conservation's job.
Yeah, that, that concern certainly is already on the record.
Is that on the record also? I just want to make sure. All right, uh. In Captain Colleen's comments submitted on February twenty-seven, uh, he indicated that the parking lot. Uh, is, shall have a turning radius to accommodate the fire apparatus.
Yeah, I'll say there's definitely a bunch of, you know. Concerns with regards to, you know, fire safety access.
Right, I'm just concerned not so much with the access into the site, but actually on the site. That there's going to be enough turning radius where the building is for the trucks to maneuver. And my maneuverability question goes to, how do we know that that site isn't going to get choked up with materials? Or equipment that would prevent the trucks from safely turning around in there.
Yeah, but certainly I, I'd have to say that all, all of the comments and concerns that are, concerns that are currently on record. Will eventually have to be answered.
But that was something that I, I noticed in.
They have not yet been answered does not mean that they are being ignored.
We, we will not, at least, I will not be looking to move forward without getting these answers, so that, you know. Beyond tonight, yes. Beyond to close the hearing and make a decision, no, is kind of my.
This, this, this process will continue until such time as all questions have been resolved.
All right, so now, so now going back to the road, as Mr. Wood had mentioned. Uh, he has proposed to bring an eight-inch water main into the property. And according to the Towne Grafton Water Division rules, the, the water line has to be a minimum of five feet of cover. Now, I don't think there'd be any problem with that through most of the road. I do see a problem at, in front of number two Donahue Lane, where there's a culvert that runs through. Under that road. The culvert is, uh. The invert's at three sixty-two and then you add, it's a twelve-inch culvert. So that brings the top of the pipe to three sixty-three and the road elevation is at three sixty-eight. So that only leaves him five feet. He wouldn't be deep enough to get that water line through. So he would have to go under that culvert, which now I have questions as to. Replacing that culvert and its impact on the wetlands on either side. Actually, there's wetlands on one side. And if, if, again, I had asked this question at the first meeting. That we could get a set of plans to see what he would like to do to install that water main and where he plans on putting it. Making sure we get the correct, correct depth and make sure that culvert is replaced correctly if it needs to be replaced.
That, that is something I'll definitely be, you know, looking to see, you know, once we can get at least the, you know, jurisdiction of that road figured out. Like if that's something that, you know, is not within our purview to, you know, rule on as a planning board, you know, that's one thing to know. But, you know, we have to kind of figure that part of this out.
The water main will need to comply with all the water district regulations. And the engineering, the engineering required to make that happen. Uh, particularly vis-à-vis a particular culvert, that's an engineering problem that they will eventually have to figure out. Whatever extent, we'll need to take that into account in our process.
Right. So again, you had mentioned that the, the road being private and I, I, I know we've touched on this again, but I'd just like to bring it up. That the fire department wanted twenty-eight feet but would accept twenty-four feet. And the width of that road doesn't look like you can get more than twenty-one feet. So I just wanted to bring that up again, that this is not, if, if the fire department doesn't feel it's safe. Will the board accept that and prevent this project from moving forward?
That's, that's one of many considerations we have to make and, you know, there's lots of things to figure out at this point.
Strictly a safety issue. I mean, if the fire department deems it not to be safe, will the board override that and still. Allow the permit to go through?
Can't say for certain until the time comes to make a decision, but as, as a general rule, I think this board prefers not to go against the wishes of the fire department.
I know you guys, you had mentioned that you prefer to, to defer to the expertise of the departments. But I just wanted a little more clarification on that. I know it's hard because you're not making a call right now.
We don't have enough information to say, say how we would rule on that.
Right, because that, you know, it's just, you know, with it being a private road, you know, it just. Leaves me to wonder, you know, if a developer wanted to come into town and do a small development and decided, I'm just not going to have the road accepted by the town. Would they be allowed to do any size road they wanted?
Uh, they'd have to. Get, they'd have to get their subdivision approved. And, um, we haven't been approving private, uh, private roads. I don't remember the last time. I, I, I don't think, except in, uh, some condos. Back in the day.
To do some further clarity, like, we don't. We don't make approvals for public roads that's up to the town in the end. What's, roads, the road is built. You know, but the subdivision, you know, rules we have does have, you know, requirements for roads, you know, for the subdivision roads. We have, you know, we look at those and we make an approval or not on a subdivision, you know, plan. So that is taken into account with us. You know, but in, in the end, the acceptance of the road is not strictly planned.
A, a subdivision rule does not depend upon roads ending up being public ways. The standards for road design in a subdivision that this board approves are the same whether or not the road ever becomes public. The standards are the same. As Bob alluded to, and I don't, you know, we don't need to really go, you know, go too far off in this tangent. But as Bob alluded to, I'm, I'm aware of one case where a development was approved as a subdivision. This was under sort of a, some earlier versions of subdivision rules, but the approval specifically was in agreement with the developer. That the roads would never be, become, become public ways.
Wouldn't be accepted by.
That was back in the eighties and we don't do things that way anymore.
Right, no, I'm just looking at, you know, you're putting a new building up at the end of the road and, you know, if, if. If someone else wanted to do that in the road, they wanted to put a road in that wasn't to the twenty-four-foot specification minimum. Would they be allowed to do that if they just said it was going to be a private road?
Yeah, I would say with the current board and the current set of rules, unlikely. I, I will not say no.
Are, are the twenty-two and twenty-four pavement or? The whole width of the right away? I think you're talking about pavement, aren't you?
Right, we're talking pavement here. With Donahue Lane, we're talking about the pavement.
And twenty-four are fairly common in subdivisions.
Right, but twenty-four is the minimum in town.
Fire department, the fire department likes a minimum of twenty-four. In fact, when we updated the subdivision, we're kind of getting off topic here. We updated the subdivision rules a couple of years ago, we eliminated the twenty-two foot width.
Current is twenty-four is the minimum you can get, get by within town. All right, so I mean, since you're not, uh, we're not even close to making any kind of determination. The rest of these, these questions and comments, I guess I can, I can hold off on for now.
Also feel free to submit them to the.
I, I most certainly will, but I just, you know, I, I just. I don't foresee this project being of any benefit to that area or the neighborhood. It's, I think it's only going to be a detriment to the neighborhood and the reliability of the applicant is seriously in question at this point. You know, with everything that Fiona seems to be coming up with. It, it just, it leaves a, a question as to whether or not any. Any parameters that are put on his special permit, if it's approved, that they would be followed. Or it, it obviously not even followed up on, since it's been eight years since the previous special permit was issued. And there's been substantial violations and changes down on that site. And there's no reason not to believe it's going to continue in the future.
Have any complaints been filed with the town? Non-compliance.
Excuse me?
Can you help document that?
I most certainly can. You can go down to the building department and see the complaint filed. I, I filed it with the town, uh.
Yep, yep, and we also have a detailed record too, Bob, as well.
So yes, because I know you would ask that question earlier, Bob. Yes, there has been a complaint filed.
How, how long ago was that?
It'd be almost two weeks now. It took a little over a week just to get somebody down there, which again brings a concern to. And that was only because we had, I got into this process.
Right, but I'm talking about the eight years.
Eight years was when the special permit was issued.
Right, and, and allegedly, uh, there have been various non-compliances through that period, not just two weeks ago. Were, were there, yeah, and the complaint is that they weren't, um, followed up on. Rather than to have been followed up on, then it would have needed written complaint, you know, some sort of complaint that would be on record.
The complaint that was made in the last, within the last two weeks had to do with the operation of crushing equipment down on the, the site. I, but I'm just saying, the, the special permit that was issued in twenty fifteen, there were various violations that were found afterwards. And looking at that permit.
Bob, Bob, is your question, have there been complaints prior to recently? Have, have there been complaints going back to twenty fifteen or shortly thereafter documenting the continued violations?
That I don't know. That I don't know, but I mean, the, by looking on the town, just you can get the aerials from the different years. And see the progression of change on the site.
I'll say this, should, should the planning board approve this, which is a big if at this point, you know, we, we don't know, we don't know. But if this is approved and the applicant has conditions that we set and they don't follow them. Anyone in town, you know, or even outside of town could file a complaint with the building inspector, you know, send, you know, CC the boards, you see the planning department, you know, whatever. And, you know, bring it to the town's attention and we can have that, you know, addressed, you know, much, you know, earlier than with.
At that point, the horse is already out of the barn because the building is up. You know, and that's.
Building could be up, but if they're not following the conditions, it could be, you know, there's lots of avenues that could be pursued by the town. Yet, yes, it's harder to take a building down once it's already, it's harder to change the land when it's already moved. But, you know, that's, you know, just the, you know, commentary there. And I will additionally say, if councils in some way, uh, says it is germane for the board to have. You know, more information regarding that, that past, you know, process, how the applicant has, you know, handled it. It would be useful to have on our record, the, you know, complaints that have been filed, you know, the history of it. And, you know, anything that the building inspector, you know, teams appropriate regarding that. I, if it's not germane to us making a decision, I'd rather that be on our record, but I still would like to at least hear a brief, you know, answer.
But, but Mike, I'm concerned that people keep saying there have been ongoing violations. And nothing was done about it. At least that's what I think I hear them saying. And we're not, two weeks is not, that, that's not in that category. Takes time. I'm talking about if. You, you could only expect action to have been taken, non-compliances to have been discovered if somebody made a complaint about it. Dog catchers aren't catching dogs and we don't have building people out looking for violations of, uh, special permits.
I understand that, Bob, but I didn't see the actual twenty fifteen permit until a week and a half ago. And that's when I saw the violations that were, that had been ongoing.
I, I think we're all on the same page here is that, number one, if this has been going on for years, if, you know. Reporting to the, you know, town would have been, you know, the way to address it, you know, if the town doesn't know about it, then you're not going to do much. Secondly, as, you know, abutters, you know, especially if you had seen the question going on for the last eight years, have seen these, you know, things going on. But you didn't know that was against what they were allowed to do, you wouldn't have known to report it. You know, so, you know, I think we're on the same page there, but it's, you know, just to summarize.
Thank you.
I think that's just the point. I think that's just the point I want to reiterate, is there were no complaints made because there was no permit filed with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, therefore the document wasn't made freely available to us to see what the actual conditions were, so we didn't have an understanding of what the applicant was allowed to do on the site and we now know that he wasn't allowed to be doing any of the activities he was doing on the site until the permit was finally acquired from the planning department and discovered that he actually was not in compliance with that, so therefore no reports were made because we were not given the opportunity to see the recorded permit.
Yes, all you have to do is ask the town clerk. That, that's where it, uh, gets recorded.
The town clerk did not have a recorded copy of the permit.
I really doubt that.
If I could just add, um, one comment to that, so I moved in in twenty nineteen and there was, there's been a lot of noise since that time and me as a new homeowner, my first home, I love the neighborhood. I was just hoping in my mind that anybody who owns that site was acting in good faith and following along with what they said that they were going to do. So to me, I love the neighborhood, that loud noise and the crushing and the not being able to be on Zoom calls, that really, really like detrimental noise and vibrations I can feel in my home, I kind of accepted it just because I didn't know better. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear, that I wasn't aware of the fact that it was supposed to just be a contractor's yard where they store equipment, but not be moving the earth and be doing a lot of things there, so if I knew better, I would have certainly filed with the town. Thank you.
And I, I just wanna reiterate that at least, you know, at least for me and I'm, I believe the rest of the board and, you know, others are in agreement with this, we're not faulting the public for not knowing that, you know, it was against the, you know, rules, it's just, you know, we were checking to see if there was a situation that, there've been numerous complaints but nothing acted upon that we could, you know, then try to address in that regard as well.
Yeah, and thank you, Karen Merrill, fifteen Hollywood Drive, and just to follow on to what my neighbor Stephen just said, uh, you may recall that COVID had a big change in our lives, I was commuting to Unsocket Rhode Island during the times that this crusher started running, and I also expected that this, um, business was doing exactly what they were permitted to do. Never even occurred to me, and to, to call you up and ask you, is this okay for him to be doing this? I mean, you just assume that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I just wanted to follow on to say that, yes, COVID and working from home brought this very much to the front, when we were all having to close our windows in order to keep our Zoom calls going for work. And, um, with what's going on with, you know, working from home in general, people are gonna be working from home for a good long time, maybe forever. Um, but I also wanted to follow up with the gentleman from Cornerstone. Um, uh, so based on a comment, sir, that you made, uh, earlier, you, you mentioned that all the homes on Hollywood Drive are ranch houses. Yeah, you're nodding, okay. I, I just wanna make sure that, um, you have, I, I kinda wanna invite you to walk the property, uh, uh, mine, fifteen Hollywood Drive, my, two of my neighbors at thirteen and seventeen Hollywood Drive also have two stories in the back of their home. Um, we purposely designed our homes so that they would fit into the neighborhood and when we went to do a second story, we wanted to make it all look like ranch houses on the outside, at least, I'll speak for myself. I wanted my house to continue to look like a ranch house from the outside, so it fit well into the neighborhood, the design of the neighborhood, I didn't wanna change the integrity of that. But we needed more space for our family of five, and so because our land dips down in the back, we were able to add a two-story addition on the back, which we worked with local, you know, uh, contractors to do that. So I would invite you to certainly walk my property at fifteen Hollywood Drive, so you can see exactly where that three hundred ninety-eight foot berm is gonna stop and where your, um, it, the, the, the current pile of loam that's, that's on, on your, on the property now is well over my roof line, and again, I'm, I have a two-story uh, house, so, um, you can even come inside and look out my bedroom window if you wanna take a look and see what's gonna, what I'm gonna be seeing after you've built your berm, at the, at those, the plans that are current. And so that's really all I have for, for follow-up.
Thank you. As always, I thank everyone from the public for their comments and concerns, we're definitely taking everything into account at this point. Is there any further questions, comments, or discussion from the board at this time? That brings us to, I don't believe the board has, you know, as we are well aware, all the information we need to make a decision at this point, so there'll need to be a continuation. Mister Colorama, are you, I forgive, forgive if I pronounce your name wrong, but are, are you prepared to? Are you prepared to make a, um, request to, for a continuance?
Yes, we would request that.
And to what day, what date would work best for the information that you need to get together?
Um, do you know what the available meetings are coming up?
Next one is the twenty-fourth.
After the twenty-fourth is one on the first Monday in May, I think it is.
Right, because of town meeting.
And then the fourth, fourth Monday in May.
Yep, so.
And now I only have two more meetings.
Linda has
Right.
Right, so Linda has meetings.
So April twenty-fourth and May first are our next two meetings, those are the only two we'll have Linda present for.
That's correct.
Beyond that, there'll be a town, a town vote for new planning board member.
Yes.
Okay. Who will? Is there any, we can go for the twenty-fourth, uh, being optimistic that we may have some information?
Yep, you could go for the twenty-fourth, and if it doesn't work out.
You can continue again.
Yep. That way it leaves it open, knowing we only have a couple of meetings left.
Is Prabhu going to be able to qualify on this? How many, how many meetings has he missed?
Yeah, how's?
There he is.
Are we gonna be able to have a quorum once we lose a member?
We'll, um, we'll have, uh, what am I missing?
Natalia.
No, we, we may not have enough to approve a special permit.
Right.
On the
Cause that is closing before Linda's gone, if, if it's only the.
We need the decision before.
Yeah, so that, that, I can't see that happening. Um, so we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out, we'll have to talk with Fiona and figure that out, how that's gonna work.
Yeah, how we have dealt with this situation in the past, if I remember correctly, is to, once we have a new board constituted, we basically, we effectively restart the process, we re-advertise the public hearing, uh, we kind of incorporate into that the record from where we're, from everything, everything we've accumulated so far on the record becomes part of the record for the new public, but we started as a new public hearing so that, you know, the, all the clocks start afresh.
Yeah, and all the, and.
Yeah, and given the complexity of this particular, uh, circumstances and, and sort of what's kind of out there, I think it's a good idea to do it that way, rather than to try and resolve this in the next two meetings.
Yeah.
I am concerned that whoever is going to sit on this, uh, um, will have heard all of, you know, we've heard quite a lot of testimony at our meetings, and they will not have heard that, and I think it's relevant on this case, so, um, that's a concern, I don't have a, no, I don't have a way to fix that, but we may have to do more. We may have to have everybody come on down again, but we'll have to see who's who, I don't know whether Prabhu, um, will be able to mull in, uh, this time, but if we start again, I guess he's, he's on board.
Okay, Natalia, go ahead.
I don't believe that Prabhu missed any of the hearings for this particular one, it was the other one that he missed on. I believe he's okay with this one, which would make it four, I believe.
Yeah, for, for now, but.
For now.
Is on the board till, I think, end of June.
Yes.
Who is?
More, our associate member, until the end of June, in which case.
Yeah, unless she, um, re-ops, or gets re-ops.
It'd have to be.
Might need to get going, by the way.
June thirtieth.
But, yeah, so, I think I heard the, knowing all we have to you know, do on this project, I don't, even, even if we had new information at next two meetings, I don't suspect that we'd be done in this short period of time. I think we did hear a verbal request to continue until the twenty-fourth. I, you know, suggest that they work with staff to see if we want to re-advertise and how to go about that as well, and.
Yeah, I ran across some correspondence in my email folder that dealt with this, a, a, a previous situation where we essentially re-advertised and sort of started over, I can dig that up.
Okay.
I, I don't remember how long ago that was, but that may be informative for this particular case.
Right, yeah, I foresee that.
There, there'll be some paperwork involved in, uh, withdrawing current application, you know, you can't leave the current application open. You either have to transform it into, into the new thing, or withdraw it, and start over. Someone's gotta figure that out.
Anyway, for the purposes of tonight, I think, you know, the applicant will work with staff to see how to proceed as, as far as that goes, but we have a verbal request to continue till the twenty-fourth. We will need that in writing to staff from the applicant, I, probably an email is okay, there's a, there's a form as well that staff can get to you. But, so we'll, we'll anticipate that and hearing that there is a request to continue, do I have a motion?
Yes. Move that we, uh, grant the request when we receive it to continue the, this hearing until, uh, April twenty-fourth at seven thirty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and you discuss around the motion. Hearing, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hassenger. Mr. Hassenger.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Hassenger.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Venkateshaman.
Yes.
And I will, I declare this hearing will be continued till the twenty-fourth and if they, if there is a re-advertising, it'll, that will be involved, you know, more, another notice that goes out to all the abutters as well for the new date and, you know, and all that information will still be on our site. Is that?
Okay.
Procedural first? Yep.
Thank you all for your time, I just have another question, um, this is already our third time showing up for this. And in my opinion, it seems like the, the site owner is not, has not been as prepared as we have been, we've taken the time to really work hard to work as a team to, to be prepared. And the fact that, um, the site owner was not present tonight, does not have many of our concerns addressed, hasn't even looked into many of them. I wonder, my question is, how many continuances can we do? Um, right now, I have childcare at home. I, I, I can't, it's hard for us to continue this for so long, especially when they're not showing up and not doing their due diligence, so I just, and for me, my other concern is, if we just completely start the slate over again, it's almost like it's giving him or the site owner a fresh slate to rekindle market this with all the faults we've already found. Um, so that's a concern to just let them kinda just not show up, oh, you can just start over again. Um, so that's a concern I have, I just wanted to share, thank you.
Thank you.
And of this all, I was never on the list of being invited to this, my neighbor, uh, Karen had told me about this. And my property is thirteen Hollywood Drive, the road is right, I'm right there, so many, another concern is many people probably weren't even notified of this, um, including people on Donny.
For probably touch base with staff, if you were not on the list, and they can at least, you know, identify the, you know, why and perhaps, you know, on that front, so that, you know, all the abutters should have been, you know, notified and there is a formal list for that, and then, you know, secondly, as far as, you know, how long can they continue it? Typically, the board allows the applicants to continue as long as, you know, necessary, you know, staying the, you know, timelines, if there are any for a project, so that, you know, these can sometimes go for a few months, sometimes, yeah, I've seen it. And that, that said, this board at least is, you know, a very big proponent of also allowing Zoom, so as a member of the public, if you join Zoom and you raise your hand on Zoom, we can, at that point, we can bring you in to be able to make a comment or, you know, ask a question, you know, through Zoom itself, so that's, you know, an option available to you as well.
Okay, I'll be here in person, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
You said that in continuing, you'll incorporate the record, does that include all comments that have been made to date in these meetings?
Yep, the entire record will be carried forward into a new hearing.
Okay, so all public comments will continue from this?
Yes.
Except that the verbal comments would only be available to someone who goes back and watches all the videos.
So verbal comments will not.
Record is carried forward.
Yep, the, to, to clarify, the entire record, which does include verbal comments, is part of the new record, but to that extent, if there's new members, you know, we treat it as, you know, fresh, so, you know, repeating stuff, having, you know, the board that has been here repeats stuff is also, is, is considered useful.
It is helpful to have all comments in writing.
Yeah, so.
So verbal comments that have been made to date will not be considered as public comments to any future application made by this applicant.
They will, my, my point is how, how they get considered, they're on, they're on the video record, but people have to look at the video record. You know, you might wanna check with whoever's running to fill the empty, the soon-to-be-empty seat about what their plan may be as to doing that.
The way I'll, you know, the way I'll answer is, by law, and as far as I know, there's nothing that says they have to watch the past meetings, but the information is, you know, what the board consider part of the record, when I ran for the seat, am I now? I made sure to watch the records of every meeting, you know, or even attended, of every meeting that was before, you know, the day I took office, so that I knew the full history as well, even though those projects had to be re-advertized and I started from scratch.
And it's probably fair to point out that those of us who will be on that board after May, uh, our, our memories do not get erased on the day of the election, so the majority of us will remember all of the oral testimony that's been given, the new person, uh, will have the opportunity to review the video, but that's why I said it's, it's easier for new people to review the record for things that are in writing. It is feasible for them to review the video, the videos are all online perfectly, perfectly well available, and again, Justin, Bob, myself, Prabhu, Maura, we're, we're not gonna forget everything that we've heard. And I know I'm getting older, but my memory's not that bad.
Yeah, um, now, when I ran for planning board, I just started attending the meetings in January, so that I was pretty well up to speed come May. Yeah, we didn't have all this kinda record stuff, but the point is that I, they, they let me interact with them, so.
So there's no guarantee that the public comments made to date will be considered by new members, it's if they do their due diligence, then they will consider it, but if not, then we're out of luck.
Any member might choose not to listen to a comment. Justin, or me, or Bob, or Prabhu, we, we might choose to not pay attention to some of the comments that we've read or heard.
But they will not be incorporated into the record.
Right, everything, everything is considered part of the record, and what board members choose to do with what they read or hear on the record is up to them. I can't control that.
So the comments made to date will be part of the record?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and as, was I, just to kinda reiterate, you know, kinda circle back, just put a point on, on it, anything that is, you know, verbally said, if it's submitted in writing as well, that's like a dot on, you know, dot in the eye. It, it helps because not only is it, you know, easier to re-read, even for us, to receive what was said, you know, comments that points are, are made, but it also, from past experience, if, if a decision goes to a court hearing, it's a lot easier for a judge or someone to look at the, you know, written documents and go, okay, this is, you know, this was mentioned, this is an issue, versus, you know, having that same person devote like an hour, two hours, ten hours, whatever it is of our public hearings, and watching every, you know, second in a public hearing.
I, I'm pretty sure you're not gonna see the court look at, uh, video, so following up verbal with written, or coming in in advance with written, um, is the best bet. Is the best bet, um, but let's see how this plays out and um.
Oral is considered part of our record, written is, you know, a notch above in terms of, you know, better for us, but.
So it's more considered if it's in writing.
Yep, it helps.
Well, that depends on each individual, of course, as as is everything.
It's more likely to be considered if it's in writing.
Listening is easier than reading some of the uh, you know, paragraph, page long paragraphs and whatnot that we get. But we've we've seen some pretty good input on this one, uh, but they're it's hard, you know.
But everything should be submitted in writing to ensure that.
The best.
It's easier for everybody, or at least the people considering.
And it's more solid, you know.
I I I do think that we've actually voted to continue the hearing.
Yeah, I was just.
So that this is a procedural question on on when this is. Withdrawn and resubmitted, what we need to do to make sure that our comments are incorporated into the record, because it was unclear if. What has been said to date, if the application is withdrawn, if if everything that we've said will be considered. I just want to make sure that all of our rights are being.
To the best of the board's ability, everything will be considered.
I I think to just to kind of put a point on it, I think. We answer the best that we can tonight. I think any further, you know, procedure questions and how this is, you know, going to go forward.
Should be put in writing.
Communicate with staff, you can call, you can call the planning department as well, come in, you know, I think that's going to be the easiest to. You try identify the, you know, the those further questions, those further clarifications.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick point, Justin. I thought I saw somewhere on the GCTV site that there's actually a transcript on the side of the. The hearings that that they, can you guys just print that out and use that in the record?
We don't have access, I don't think. Oh, they they actually, there's two different cases there. YouTube is one thing and uh our own uh playback system, streaming system. Uh, is a different thing, but I'm pretty sure that the um, the 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 transcriptions. Are not accessible.
Yeah, I just know I saw it online that you could, you know, as you're watching the video, you can see on the side, it's actually.
My understanding, and this, you know, this could be wrong, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is that those are. Completely like computer audit, you know, generated and that those are not admissible as part of the record as a transcript.
All right, I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, my my point is that technically, I'm pretty sure they're not available, they. You know, there there's equipment that does the interpretation and sticks it into the video as it's playing. Um, it doesn't output a script or something that um you could use.
So that brings us to the very end of this public hearing for tonight. Thank you, everyone. Still have more items for the planning board to go over. Next up is the MBTA communities update with CMRPC.
Hello.
Yes, it is.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Um. So um I put together a little presentation for the planning board that um you guys should have. Um, myself and Matt Franz, who um is our GIS guru at CMRPC. Um, have been meeting with Dave and Fiona um over the past few weeks. Um, basically to discuss how grafting can approach achieving compliance with the recent MBTA zoning law. Um, so I, you know, I'm sure I'm sure the board is aware of it, but basically, um, I guess Fiona, if we can go to the next slide. Um, just if anyone in the public is unaware, so in early twenty twenty one, the legislature passed. Basically, this zoning reform law for the state that requires communities in certain proximity to public uh to. Basically, different types of public transit um to increase the amount of allowed multifamily housing. Um, there's a lot of different definitions of that, uh, for the purposes of Grafton. Basically, even though there is a station in Grafton, you are classified as what's called an adjacent community. Um, which is good, um, it just means that you have a longer timeline for compliance and they're going to be a little less stringent about where the district is located. Um, and so as an adjacent community, uh, Grafton is required to submit a demonstration of district compliance. By the end of twenty twenty four, so what that means is that by the end of twenty twenty four, um. You know, any zoning changes that need to happen to achieve compliance should be passed by town meeting. Um, so that we can submit a form to the state. And so, um, you know, I've reviewed this before, but it's relatively straightforward. I mean, it's it's. When once you, there's a, there's a spreadsheet that the state put together to help the town determine compliance and that, as you'll see, the process of conducting that is. You know, can be kind of intricate and complicated, but the outcomes in terms of policy, I think, are fairly straightforward. Basically, um, based on your existing housing stock, um, I I apologize, I neglected to include the number, but. All, you know, this is all, this all counts for the state's numbers, everything we're going to be presenting, but basically, um. For every town that's an MBTA community, a total of fifty acres of land that allows fifteen housing units per acre. Um, by right with site plan review allowed, um, you know, must must be identified in the zoning. Um, you can break that into multiple districts, but uh at least one of those. This, you know, one of those zones has to be at least twenty five acres in size, so at least fifty percent of that fifty acres has to be in one location. And then any other areas have to be a minimum of five acres in size, so kind of the the purpose of that is so that you're not. Like creating these small areas or you could, you know, you could hypothetically dot it all around town and have no viable areas, so. The idea is that you're generating sort of like new neighborhoods that um you could put the multifamily housing in. Um, next slide. So like I said, um, myself and Matt and uh have been meeting with Fiona and Dave. Um, to determine approaches to demonstrate compliance with the law. Um, so there's four different approaches that we've identified, and I think the purpose of us meeting today is we really would like some planning board feedback on how to move forward. Once we identify uh an approach, then we can, you know, go back to work. And come back to the planning board with some proposed zoning changes that will um help demonstrate compliance. Um, so like, but based on our, based on what we've identified, I actually think Grafton is in a really strong position. Um, I'm, we'll we'll get to it, but basically, I think there's going to be minimal changes to demonstrate compliance, which is a good thing. Um, some towns have to generate like completely new zoning districts. I think for Grafton, there's only going to be minor tweaks that you make to add to uh. You know, to the to the geographic areas that we've identified in order to demonstrate compliance. Um, next slide. So, um, as you can see on this map, um, we've basically identified. There's four different areas that I think, so I'm just trying to explain how the state views it. There's no requirement that Grafton have like an MBTA three A district by name. If so, like hypothetically, if a town had. Ran, you know, existing multifamily zoning that, you know, had all fulfilled all these requirements. They just have to show the state that they fulfill the requirements. There's not really a requirement to like generate new districts unless you have to. Um, and so. Basically, what the way that we're identifying where we want to make some some little tweaks. Um, we're looking at a few different areas of village and neighborhood mixed use zoning. Um, all our proposals are going to include a chunk of the North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District. And uh the Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District is also in the mix as a potential area. Um, so I'm going to have more detailed maps for each uh option, but just uh, just to orient the public and the board. These are sort of the the four main areas we're looking at is that VMU, that Village Mixed Use eleven in the north. Along with the North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District in the north. And then in the south, the Fisherville District and more VMU districts. And so there are four options that we've identified. Um, these options are based on the existing zoning, which means minimal changes may be needed. So part of how comply, the main factor that determines compliance is the amount of multifamily housing that is allowed in a district. There are certain requirements that it be allowed by right, um, you can have a site planner review. And there are sort of limitations on how much inclusionary zoning you can require in the district. But in terms of the density, these, all these options that we've identified, Grafton, like. If if you make these little tweaks, which the the changes, the two changes that we've identified. Are reducing the amount of inclusionary zoning in these areas, which is kind of an unfortunate consequence of the law, but, you know. That that is what it is, and then changing um the density to allow it by the right. You could do a very simple overlay district to implement those changes in these in these districts that we've identified, and that would. Demonstrate compliance, because you already have the underlying zoning shows the shows the density. And so, um, I'll go through each one in more detail, and we're probably going to have to jump around the presentation if the board wants to, just to see where we're where we're talking about. But um, each of these districts, I've I've created sort of a little chart for each one. There they each consist of three different sections that we're using to determine compliance. So as you can see, all four options use the north, you use a use a a proxy, an eight point nine acre portion of the North Grant. Grafton Transit Village Overlay District. Um, the first two use a a portion of Village Mixed Use District in the south that we are calling VMUDR one. Um, option one uses VMU eleven, which is nor, which is that VMU district in the north near the North Grafton District. Um, and then the rest of the options all use the same nine point eight acre portion of the Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District. And then, um, option three and four do modifications to the via, different modifications to the VMUDR one district. Um, but as you can see, what the state is most interested in is that column at the end, which is the total. So we have total acreage, all of these approaches are bringing us over fifty acres. Um, the unit capacity is above what is required by the state in all these districts. And across these three districts in each case, the the unit, the unit density is over fifteen units per acre. So numerically, all of these options are viable. I think what I'm interested, what we're interested in hearing from the rest of the board is from a planning, and I guess. You could say like an aesthetic perspective, a more subjective perspective, which of these options would kind of. Be in line with the board's planning goals long term, right, rather than. Numerically, we could present any of these options to the state, we we we're kind of, at this point, we're kind of interested in like, yeah, like I said, just. What what would be the most pleasant approach, right? Um, what would, what would sort of potentially be the most politically viable, what would be and what and what would be in line with. The vision for the future of Grafton. Um, before I move on to the four options, do we have any questions? I I apologize for all the different acronyms. It it took me a while to 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 get my wrap my head around it, so.
Having scrolled the presentation, I'll say one thing that kind of sticks in my mind is when we go to our next step, having these, you know, what. The zoning areas highlighted on a, you know, full map of Grafton as, you know, the option we're presenting is probably going to be useful. You know, I think it's necessary for us tonight, but that's just a.
Yeah, so so, um, yeah, the map, I the full map of Grafton is fairly low resolution, but. Um, if I can, I can try to articulate, we're going to do closeups of each of these districts we're talking about.
Do that tonight?
Yeah, we have.
In the future.
No, no, we have, we have closeups of each of the districts in the in the following slides.
My comment was for the future, but I think, you know, tonight, I think.
Yeah, okay, no, totally. So, um, I guess we'll look at option, so I I I think option one was the, so this is in order of the approach that. Like the different approaches that we looked at, I think this is probably the least. Um, I don't know, like, we moved on from this option, so uh, I don't know if this is like the most favorite option among. Uh, I mean, I guess it was like primarily Dave and Matt who were really digging into the numbers, so. Um, and Dave and Fiona, if you want to jump in at any point to uh explain some of the reasoning. Um, and and some of the context too, because I'm I'm looking at this from a bird's eye view, so. Um, so option one, we're looking at this, so on 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 the top, we have this, um. Around on the left, we have this eight point nine acre portion of the North Grafton Transit Village Overlay District. Um, and like I said, that's going to be present in all four options that we're looking at, and what that that gives us a lot of flexibility. As you can see, the dwelling unit per acre capacity is uh nearly seventy four units per acre, and that's based on the existing zoning. And so what that what that means is that that kind of gives us this huge buffer for any other places where we don't have to. We're we're in a position where we don't really have to upzone other portions of Grafton significantly to comply with the law. We use that to kind of buy compliance in the rest of the, in the rest of the town, and in talking to folks from the state, this is an approach that is like totally viable. And I think kind of preferred so that towns have flexibility. Um, district two is that VMUDR one district. Um, that's in the south of Grafton, and you're going to see that one come up a lot, so this is a certain approach to that DR one district. Um, it's outlined in blue, um, so it's, and it's it's that chunk south of Main Street that we're looking at. Um, sort of looks like, I don't know, Cape Cod or something.
Yeah, just in case anybody's confused about the names that are given to the zones in this presentation, the VMUDR zones. And the very variants of that are all different portions of the VMU South Grafton, VMUSG, which is the name by which it's known in our zoning. Similarly, the VMU eleven as designated here is what we call VMUTV, that's the Transit Village Zone. That's the zone where Afonso Village is.
Yeah, so like Dave said, then that that third zone we're looking at is VMU eleven. Um, which is up near the trans, it's right near the Transit Village.
And and just for the completeness and relating it to things on the ground, the nor, district one, the North Grafton Transit Village is the. Eight Pine Street, it's the forty, the Eight Pine Street forty R, which the current development plan uh develops a density of approximately thirty five units per acre.
Yeah, and and that's that's another thing that I want to reiterate for the board and the public. When we're talking about this law and compliance with the law, it's, we're talking about the hypothetical ability. To bring in housing from a legal standpoint. Um, we're not talking about like a production mandate, and so if something goes in there, that's thirty five units per acre. I mean, that's still above that fifteen unit target, um, that's a sort of like, if we consider that sort of like a. You know, a North Star, um, and from the state's perspective, they don't, there's not really a consideration of the actual production. Like that doesn't, that's nothing to do with compliance. I think they see like stuff like chapter forty B is like the production side of things, that's like, you know, the stick. Um, to encourage affordable housing production, that sort of thing, so this is really just about having the zoning there, there's no, since, there's no concerns about. Like existing existing construction or like any incoming construction. Um, so I guess let's move on to the second option, option two, so as you can see. Um, from here on out, I think all these options are relatively similar. Option two, again, we're looking at the North Grafton Transit, this portion on Pine Street of the Transit Village. Um, we're looking at that same portion of the VMU in South Grafton. And then now we're looking at the Fisherville Smart Smart eight, nine point eight acres of the Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District. Um, the portion that we're discussing is that portion that's uh like hatch marked in pink. Um, in that blue, in that highlighted blue parcel, so it's only a nine point eight acre portion of that uh that area. So as you can see, um, this gives us a little more density, um, twenty-one point four units per acre. Um, and a higher unit capacity uh, of, of, of over a thousand units per acre, of, over a thousand units um, in the, in the complete a, approach. And then um, it, it's, it's gonna be over, this is the lowest acreage, so this is gonna be over fifty-one point eight acres, but as you can see, the VMUDR1, that's like this thirty-three unit, thirty-three acre zone that again, like is gonna, similarly to the density with from the North Grafton Transit Village, that size just gives us a ton of flexibility cuz we're, the, the DR, some variation of that DR1 area is a constant. Um, moving on. So this is again, a very similar option. The main change in these next two is the way that DR1 is drawn. Um, so this one, uh, Fiona, remind me what's uh, in that section to the south of the original portion. Is that the mill area?
It's the mill area.
Yeah.
So this basically adds the mill to what we were looking at in the previous slide.
Yeah, and as you can see, this brings us even more unit capacity over twelve hundred, you know, hypothetical units. Um, it brings us to again around twenty units per acre. Um, and it spreads it out over even more, over, over eighty acres, so again, you're talking about slightly like lower, lower density potential. Um, but like a larger acreage, so that's kind of the tradeoff that you can have. Um, when you can put it over like, it, it, I, I think it, you know, has the potential to sort of slightly reduce the, the, the density if that's, if that's a concern. And then finally, again, this is a very similar option. So it's that same portion, it's the same Fisherville and North Grafton Transit Village districts that we're looking at. Now DR1B, um, includes that mill area, but also this, these, these units north of Main Street, which I think from like a planning perspective, does potentially make sense to how, if you're gonna have sort of a mixed, uh, rather a, a, a multi-use or multifamily area to kind of have it exist on both sides of a corridor rather than just on one side of the street. Um, so those, those are the four options that we've been considering. Um, again, this one, it's, it's uh, nearly ninety acres overall. Um, it's the highest unit potential at uh, twelve, twelve hundred sixty-three units. Um, and if, uh, the second lowest uh, unit density at eighteen point one acre, units per acre.
To ask, is there a reason that we did not include VMU eleven in the other three options? Is it just because we didn't need to, or is there? Cuz I, I lean toward, at least for, for my own, you know, mindset here. Targeting option four plus VMU eleven, so that, you know, we can try to get it all at town meeting. You know, if one, you know, if one of those options is not passed at town meeting, in theory, if like VMU eleven is not, you know, is not passed to be included in this or whatever, then we still have, you know, a passable to the state law level, you know, you know, result.
Yeah, from my perspective, uh, these, the, 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 the second, third and fourth options do not include VMUTV. Because of the potential to have, to having to change some of the rules for VMU. Um, arguably, it's better to change the rules for just one portion of VMU rather than two. The rules that might need to be changed in VMU are the inclusionary zoning, the, the, the affordable thresholds. The affordable thresholds in the two forty Rs, the, the transit, North Grafton, Fisherville. Those affordability levels are acceptable as is because they're pre-existing forty Rs. But for the VMU, we currently have a requirement for twenty percent ownership, twenty-five percent rental affordability. Uh, the state doesn't want affordability to be more than ten percent. We, we might convince them to accept up to twenty percent if we can prove that it's feasible. Uh, but in, in either case, you would have to be reducing the affordability requirements in the, whichever VMUs we actually use. So my thought in excluding VMU eleven or VMUTV was to limit the changes to just one of our VMU districts. And in these VMUDR variants, it's changing the requirements in only part of a VMU district, not, not district wide, so as to maximize our affordability requirement while meeting the, the, the MBTA requirements. The other thing that we might need to change in the VMUs is the density of allowed by right. If you look at these figures, you see the, the VMU districts are all looking at four, five and six units per acre density. Uh, which, there, there's a big disparity. The math works. There's a question in my mind whether the state will approve like this combination here. Uh, seventy-three point six units per acre there, seven point five here and twenty-five point seven there. They're gonna see those numbers. You know, so wildly different, they, they, they might question that. So we, it might be necessary for us to increase the as-of-right threshold in Village Mixed Use from eight, where it is now, up to a higher number. And again, if we only have to change one part of one VMU, that's probably better than changing two separate VMUs or all of them.
I, I think I agree with that, I think.
These are the things we need to consider.
So an, another thing, like, from a planning perspective as well, and this has come up in Upton who, like, we were, and I asked the state about this, and there are some workarounds, like, you can't require mixed use. But like, you can't require a mixed use approach. You can, you can, there's certain workarounds, like you could do a density bonus if someone implemented mixed use and allow like an extra story if they were building the mult, the, like, required multifamily. But part of the thing with this law is it does kind of hamstring you from outside of the housing production end of things. It doesn't really consider the affordability and other planning priorities in a holistic manner. Um, so like, that's just another example is that it would, like, from, if, if you expanded it over more zones, it would, in the future, it could limit like other like, other planning opportunities to, and also that, like, we'll see how the, the law might evolve, but that is a concern, I have that.
Yep, and how that, speaking to that mixed use requirement. The Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District on the south side of Main Street requires mixed use. It won't allow multifamily only. Whereas the north side, which is what we're using here, allows a development of, allows you to build just multifamily without commercial component. So that's why we, that's why we're only using this part of FSGOD.
Yeah, um, with, you can't even see when I raise my hand, eh? Um, uh, I'm particularly interested in the affordability part of this. Um, since you're talking about maybe being able to increase beyond ten percent. Um, and I'd be interested in knowing more about that. And I'm also interested in the ability, uh, well, or, or the level of affordability. Are you just talking about the usual forty B level, or are you talking about um, a more so, you know, like sixty percent?
Yeah, so um, my understanding is that the default that the state will allow sort of the maximum in terms of pers, overall percentage of units and like the depth of the affordability is ten percent at eighty, uh, area median income, which is, you know, not I, I, I would say not ideal, um.
A, a, area, you're saying it wouldn't comply with uh, forty B?
Oh, I mean, from a forty B perspective, any, that, that's more of a production concern, um.
I don't know what you mean.
So, so forty B, are you talking about like meeting the forty B threshold?
I'm
Sorry.
We're, 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 um, not quite in, in uh, safe harbor and as
Right.
a lot of stuff gets built, it, it seems to me that any housing that gets built needs to, in, at least in any quantity, needs to, uh, at least ten percent, so it doesn't send it further behind.
Right.
Um, I'd like to see any large housing do better than that, and I think that's eight percent of median. But um, there are a lot of arguments out there saying uh, eighty percent, but uh, that still leaves a lot of people who can't find housing. Are there opportunities for us to have at least some requirements for sixty percent, you know, wherever?
So, so you can, there's basically, we, the guidelines aren't there yet, but there is the, there is basically the town can submit. There's like a market viability study that you can submit if you wanna go beyond ten percent at eighty percent AMI. But if we're just doing like a completely vanilla application, the maximum the state will allow is ten percent at eighty. If you wanted to do twenty and include some sixty percent. Um, like I said, like, there's gonna be some process to submit, like a market viability study.
Okay, I, I'd be very interested in that. I'm not, I'm not sure how we get that study, but um, that would also
Yeah.
Okay, man, just how, how, how much there is, um.
Yeah, and I think
Or uh, you know, the lower number, uh.
Right. Yeah, and I think, I think it's gonna be more straight. The problem is, part of the situation is that DHCD is trying to enforce a law that they didn't really write. Um, so they have to interpret a law that the legislature passed and DHCD wants to see more affordable housing go in. But they have to make sure that this all complies with the law, you know? And it's the same with the mixed use, like they'd like to see mixed use required by and large in, from just an urban best planning, best practices perspective. So I, I think, I think in the coming weeks, this came up in meet, we've had a few meetings with people at the state level. I think the, I think the guideline, my, my expectation is that the waiver process is gonna be fairly straightforward. Um, the things have, my impression is that things are, the way they're stated from the state sound more complicated and then they realize. Cuz keep in mind, this isn't just applying to central mass, you're looking at all these communities in eastern mass that probably have higher affordability requirements than around here. So all those communities probably wanna see that affordability maintained. Um, I mean, Worcester, Worcester uh, is part of this category and, you know, they're, they're trying to implement their own inclusionary zoning right now, so. I, I, I think this will be a more straightforward option in the coming weeks. Um, but I, I'll, I'm glad to know that there's uh, desire to look into the market feasibility stuff.
I very much so, as far as I'm concerned. There's a, there's a lot of concern out there about producing housing, but all, and, but producing affordable and very affordable.
One thought Fiona, is that if we do need to fund and do a study on, you know, that, you know, market fit for, you know, affordability. That, one thought that comes to mind is that it might be something that is usable by CPA funds. I don't know if it is.
Okay.
You know, that, that's a, you know, I don't know for sure that it is, but if that is something that can be used for CPA funds under, you know, the affordable, you know, affordable mandate of CPA that was worth looking into.
Okay.
I, I, I'm, I'm wildly speculating here, but I kind of expect there will be funding for it uh, out there. Cuz I don't, again, we're we're looking at a lot, again, like, we're looking at like nearly two hundred communities of which many have their own affordability requirements they wanna prove. Um, that have probably been around for a long time and are viable. And I don't think they're expecting all those communities to like hire a, you know, to do, to do their own market studies. Um, cuz again, it's DHCD, you know, enforcing it, and DHCD wants to see these towns have better affordability. They just need to make sure that they're complying with the letter of the law, you know?
I didn't know how you do that survey, by the way.
Um, yeah, I, the, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Great, well, um, we're rushing right up fast towards uh, the center of next year, um. The rate the state moves, um, who knows?
Yeah, there, you know, we'll see.
So am I right to say the next step the planning board needs to do is tonight identify which of these four options we want to put forward to the state? And then, you know, from there, we'll, you know, look to see what we can do with affordability that we just talked about and, you know, go from there.
Yeah, you, use this as a basis to write zoning changes.
I'll say for, out loud, my, I'm leaning toward at least liking option four the best for myself, just because it gives a little bit more, you know, coverage area for what can be done, and I like the idea of being able to do this on both sides of Main Street as well, that in, in theory, that, you know, that area could be, you know, have similar development in, you know, in the future.
And I'll scroll through the other options again as well.
Yep, yeah, I, I, I proposed option, well, options one and two, that the, the VMUDR district, I, but particularly option two, I, I looked at that as sort of the uh, the, the minimum, that is, you know, cobbling together just enough to get us to fifty acres. Uh, and uh, but, but yes, I agree that the uh, extending that zone uh, up onto the north side of Main Street. It, it, it provides more symmetry, you know, it makes a whole lot of sense. And including the mill, including the mill parcel, it's possibly debatable value because uh, it's, it's basically the mill and a whole lot of open space. And uh, whether that open space, whether we want to see that open space potentially developed is kind of an open question in my mind, and we've had some discussions about, uh, possibly doing something in zoning to facilitate redevelopment of that mill, sort of independent of this, but in the end, it probably is not a bad idea to include, include the mill area in the MBTA zoning.
I would agree with that. I guess I think that would be beneficial.
And, and the other thing to think about is looking at, looking at, you know, going back to option four there, which is I, I think it's kind of the, I'm getting a sense that's the board's preference is to, is to look at what, what's currently in that, besides the mill parcel. Most of the rest of it is smallish residential lots. You know, lots that are in some cases of small fraction of an acre. Some of those lots could not possibly accommodate multifamily development, particularly not at eight units per acre. Uh, but take a look at, you think, think about what that zone, proposed zone covers and how, you know, any changes we might need to make for MBTA compliance in that zone, how that might affect uh, the, the current development in that zone. I'm thinking, for example, if, if we were to uh, increase the as-of-right density from eight to say twelve, that would open up more of those lots for potential multifamily development, but for the most part, those lots would not accommodate more than three or four units on one lot, which may not be a bad thing. But yeah, I was just starting, I've been starting to look at that and, and try to think of, you know, what, what could this zoning facilitate for development in that particular area, and would that make sense in that area?
So Dave, you're saying even if maybe some of the lots aren't able to support the, the, the proposed changes when we get to that point, at least having it available to meet compliances.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if, when you look, when you look at the DHCD work with the compliance workbook for that particular area, you'll see that a substantial number of those lots don't contribute to the, to the unit count.
Right.
And, yeah, the, thing to me as well is that if we do this for that entire, you know, zone is, is an option four, even if some of those lots don't conform for this, nothing precludes a particular developer from approaching, you know, two, three homeowners, you know, whatever in, in area and going, I'll offer you this for your house, you know, and property, and then developing a plan based on that after.
Right, the compliance model is based upon the existing lots. You know, it, it's uh, and, and, and that's, that's absolutely fair to think about. The potential for development in that area, if someone were to merge several existing lots together to make something that would be more viable for a somewhat more substantial multifamily development. Typically, when you think of multifamily development, you're thinking of, you know, eight units, sixteen units, twenty units, fifty units, a hundred units in one building or a small collection of buildings.
Yeah.
But multifamily applies equally to three units, four units, six units.
Uh, my, my only concern would be when, well, it would be, it would be by right. So slightly, I, you know, sometimes my, my brain jumps ahead to when reviewing for, you know, turning radius, et cetera, those types of things, and how that will be implemented on the ground is will be interesting to see how that, that plays out. Gabe, I don't know if you've had this experience in some other communities that you've been working with, but with kind of smaller lots and
Mm-hmm.
from that standpoint.
I don't think I don't think that is, I don't think the state is considering lot size. I think it's it's ju- just the base, like I said, like this is not super nuanced. So I like, because hypothetically, like. Some developer could buy up four of these lots and demolish everything on there and put in, you know what I mean, like.
Right, yeah.
So so I I think they're really just looking at the numbers in the zoning by law is like the primary, primary focus.
It's something that I I'm not, I don't remember exactly where it came up to me, but. Been suggested that. Parking is an issue. Uh when you try to make all this stuff go together, but apparently apparently there isn't too much at this point being considered about that. Is there any anything, you know, it's been suggested that one answer is put parking under. The living units. So that, you know, acreage versus number of units, it has a better chance of working, you know, if there's anything about that.
I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay.
I think I think if there was a concern from the state, if you could demonstrate that. I mean, I think the issue would be if you're requiring a certain amount of parking, you would need like there, if they're gonna. Drill down into this, which I'm like hypothetical, I don't know for sure. If they're gonna drill down into it, like they're looking at the size of the parking units of the of like each parking space per unit. And probably like there's some sort of space calculation they can do to see how that reduces the overall number of units, I think. You you might have to demonstrate that that would be like that, your your solution to put it underneath. That that could basically be. That there would be a way that like if a if a developer, like similarly with the mixed use approach, if if a developer could pick that option, you probably would have to allow them to do a height. Like unless they're building a parking garage, you would have to do like a height, like a good density bonus to allow them to build higher to put in that parking. Something like that.
The other um. Oh, the other thing, just a thought is. We've gotten away from it some, but Grafton has kinda north, middle and south. And one or another of those, the people complain that. You know, they're they're on the they're on the short end of the deal in town. So um a comparison, you know, sort of having a handle on how much burden we're putting on. North versus south with these. Your pump may well show up at town meeting and. We should have a sense of it, it's uh I'm. I'm having a a bit of a challenge with all of our side, not having spent the hundreds of hours that Dave has. So anyway, that that's a, you know, I think.
Kind kinda to that point, Bob, it, you know. We have in all of the options we're looking at here, we're leveraging existing zoning as much as possible. Particularly the the two forty R districts, you know, those those. Don't require any changes at all to be fully compliant. And then we're looking at the village mixed use in South Grafton particularly because. It's got a large, eh enough acreage to get us to over the fifty acre threshold, and if we wanted to. I haven't bothered to model this, but we could take the VMUGW, the district in the center of town. Where the old DPW barn is, and. That in terms of density, that allows twelve units by right. I and I think the acreage, the gross acreage on that lot is large enough. It satisfies the five, the five contiguous acres requirement, so we could. We could throw that into the mix if we wanted to. Not that it would give us a dramatic improvement in any of the parameters needed to satisfy the MBTA zoning, but. It's a spot in the center of town that sort of balances out the spots in north and south, if we, if if it turned out that there, eh but and again. No changes would be required to that, except. Possibly the affordability.
Right.
The affordability requirement with with any of the.
Why don't we um, in order so we can go home tonight, uh or at least have dinner. Uh at some point for tomorrow, um how about if we say option four plus the s- the center? Let's let's sort of see how that comes together.
Yeah, I think I I think that would be a really, um cause I think the other thing to stress. And this is, I think this is how a lot of towns are approaching it, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but this, the way that I think Dave and us and. Were looking at this was just kinda like, what's the minimum that we can do? But the fact is like, this is just a minimum and it's not like, you know. The I think it seems like there's a desire not to just do the minimum. And I think that's a good thing, so I I think adding the center of town would be would be cool, I mean, Dave, off the top of your head, how many like. Acres do you think would be up for grabs in that area?
Let me look that up real quick, if I hey, I think I've got, come on.
While you're looking at, I'd say that that sounds like great to me, I still have a slight. Opinion that I would rather not reduce the affordability if we can in in an area.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
And I I don't, I don't look favorably to reducing affordability requirements just to say people can build more houses, you know.
Yeah.
Doesn't really balance out for what I wanna see happen here, but.
Well, that, we 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 can make that argument down the road. Did Dave get his number?
Yeah, that that zone, well, correction, the zone is seven, seven and a half, it's about eight acres altogether.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second, I can repeat the motion as if it helps.
Repeat, yeah, so I have.
I have a a motion to recommend option four plus the s- center of town. District that.
And and Linda is secondary.
Second. Then a second, the the center town thing that.
The the VMU dash GW, which is at least our our name for that district. The folks is Matt, Matt and Gabe can assign whatever name they want, they 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 they've they've shown that they're not, they don't just simply use.
I move the question.
Right.
I didn't take, I didn't take the acronyms.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we will recommend this to town meeting, thank you so much, Gabe.
Yeah, thank you so much, and uh yeah, I'll continue to meet with uh. With uh Dave and Fiona in the coming weeks, and hopefully we can bring something more to to the planning board soon.
Yeah, we've got, we 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 can, we can add some more detail to this, throwing this new zone into the mix that.
Yeah, now now now, now that we've settled on an on a single option, it gives us a lot more to work with. All right, thank you so much, have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gabe.
Don't know where you're at in your. Agenda. This is, I'm related to this topic, my name is Jim Brown, I own Primary Colors. Uh at nine Millennium Drive.
Yes.
And I was coming here um trying to understand more about the Clermont property that's. That's being proposed to develop on five Millennium Drive, I believe.
Yeah, that, as far as I know, that is currently under discussion at the SLAC board for the 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 lip proposal. And it will, it will probably be discussed. At the Affordable Housing Trust, and ultimately, if the project moves forward, it will end up at the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, and that's where I figured it would have to, eh eh I wondered how this zoning. It was funny to hear that conversation and not talk about this massive housing. Unit that's proposed.
Yes, the fi- five Millennium Drive, it, you know, I've I've. I I don't see it fitting into the MBTA zoning in any way whatsoever. And it it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be able to contribute anything to the MBTA zoning and. Whatever happens there, it's it's gonna be processed as a some variant of forty B through the zoning board.
So as an opponent to that project, what what would you recommend I? Do in the future, in terms of what meetings to be at and what would be next?
You know, I think for the future, reaching out to, you know, planning board, a select board office would be a good, you know, start to figure out like where where to be, who to contact and.
Right.
You know.
Where it is now, I believe that they're still, if I'm correct, that they're still waiting for their endorsement letter from the SLAC board, so. There would be the town administrator's office, and then once, if a s- um endorsement letter is secured, then it moves through the channels to the ZBA. Because of forty B, the ZBA is the primary um entity that sees.
Should this, should this one I'm talking about, you know, go go to town meeting, get approved and then get, you know. Better by the state to get the exact, you know, timeline, how that was then, depending on when it goes to town meeting, you know, then once that is, you know. Finalized in that process, then if a developer had a plan that would meet that zoning. Then they would have that, you know, by right with that zoning, it, you know, I haven't looked into this one in particular, but as Mr. Robbins just said, I don't.
Right now, five Millennium Drive has, we have, this board has nothing, no interest in five Millennium Drive. Uh, right now, the project is basically still under review by the SLAC board, so if you have concerns about that.
Understood.
Yep, as you know, Fiona said, you know, contact the town administrator's office, find out when the SLAC board is gonna be discussing it next. And uh you know, get involved in that discussion.
Okay.
If the SLAC board ultimately. Issues a letter of support for that, and it will, the project will then move on eventually to the zoning board.
Um, I think we might have at least individually interest, Dave, but we haven't say so.
The the board has no formal into it, particularly not in the context of MBTA zoning.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we're not proposing, I I actually took a look at whether it potentially could make sense. To include five Millennium Drive in the AP- MBTA zoning, and I I don't remember off the top of my head why, but I concluded that it was just not relevant. It wouldn't, it wouldn't help in any way.
Right, but yeah, it it was looked at at some point, but yeah, deemed not adequate for what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome.
We might be able to complete our business before ten o'clock.
I I think likely.
I'll move that we approve the.
No against extending, so you better.
I have a motion to approve.
ender will be with me.
Do I have a second?
What was the sec- what was the motion?
Motion to approve the bills.
Uh, second.
Motion is second to approve the bills, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, because it was carried unanimously.
A move that we approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty two as drafted?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare the motion carried unanimously, staff report.
It will be quick, I promise, um in addition to MBTA communities work that's been done, thanks so much, Dave, for all of your help with that. That's been um really, you've been a wonderful asset in that regard, um I'm doing a lot of work with the housing production plan right now, the draft needs assessment was submitted. So I am working on getting my comments through, um I did uh also provide comments on additional materials, we have an upcoming workshop. For that, a date to be determined. In addition to housing production plan, I did provide some technical assistance to the Affordable Housing Trust with their twenty five Worcester Street. RFP, we did open those bids at the date stated in the RFP, um and the, I will be providing um additional assistance to the trust. This week um to finalize that process, um it has been m- majorly um. Technical assistance and application reviews, um Natalia and I have been very, very busy with um. You know, eh le- the level of inquiry and just the general busyness of the department right now, so it hasn't been as much. Time dedicated in the past couple of weeks to the like long term planning projects, but hoping to get back on track. With with that, um I am working on. Ooh finalizing uh any last minute details for our five Mill Street Park uh public meeting uh tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, sorry, I'm, I'm tired now. Yes, it's, I'm sorry, it's Wednesday, yeah, I just caught myself in Wednesday evening at Apple Tree Arts at seven PM. Um, that is good to go, I'm just have to show up and set up and other than that, um. That's this, that's this week and but yeah, really, it's it's been kind of hard to focus as much on the. Well, plans, you know, hazard mitigation plan, implementation, OSRP, et cetera, because of the just how busy we've been, which I'm sure Natalia can attest to, so. That is my short and sweet version of what's going on.
There's only twenty four hours in the day.
Yeah, right, it's, I wish there was more, I really do, it's it's exciting, but it's, we are busy, so. And that's all I got, thank you.
Any planning board member wanna talk to anything on the correspondence?
Nothing caught my eye.
All right, any reports from planning wood representatives and on town committees or CMI proceed?
Nothing for me.
Hearing none, I guess I was waiting for a motion.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, non-debatable, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare us adjourned, thank you everyone.
Good night.
Nice to have you, nice.